Good evening. I am Joseph Pereira, Chairman of the Board of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It is 6:00 PM on Thursday, January 18th, 2024. We are meeting at one government center in the first-floor meeting room. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, Subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices by Mr. Craig Salvador of Fall River Government TV. He'll be recording both video and audio versions. If anyone here desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now, and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. There's seen none. Our recording secretary this evening is Ms. Nina Kruger, sitting to my immediate right. Present this evening are permanent members John Frank, who is our Vice Chairman, James Calkins, our clerk, Dan DePere, and Ricky Sahadi. Also with us this evening is Mr. Dan Aguiar, sitting to my far left. He is the Director of Engineering and Planning. And our Assistant Planner, sitting to my far right, Mr. Chris Pereno. Nina, have all the petitions to be considered been properly advertised, and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the ZBA and Mass General Law, Chapter 48, as amended?
Yes.
I thereby declare the January 18th, 2024 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the Board, including petitioners, abutters, anyone in support, or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentations should be limited to three minutes. Can we have quiet in the room, please? Questions and responses must be directed through the Chair. The Board's rules and regulations direct the Board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this is the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Board's authority exists pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 48, and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use which is the subject of the petition before the Zoning Board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this Board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petition and after the decision of the Board has been made. For example, there was a city ordinance, 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan review. A copy of the ordinance is available in the City Clerk's office or from the Planning Department. I remind everyone that the Building Inspector is the zoning enforcement authority, and you are here this evening because the Building Inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinance. The City Charter, Section 9-18 mandates that all multi-member boards develop and adopt rules or policies for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizen input on zoning board-specific matters at the end of the meeting. If you wish to participate in public input, there's a sign-up sheet on the table outside the back door, or the main entrance. I disclose that an official copy of the Fall River zoning ordinance is available at the City Clerk's office, and that one cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. We are thereby open. We have one matter of old business that come before us. Item number 01, NNC Rental Properties Corporation, Care of Attorney Peter A. Salino, 102 Pine Street, MAP N10, Lot 21. The applicant seeks an after-the-fact special permit to construct four-unit apartment building. The applicant seeks another special permit to reduce the parking requirements. The property is located in an M multifamily zoning district and an AOD Arts Overlay District. This was tabled from our December 21st meeting. Before we begin, counsel, I have two pieces of information, or two pieces of correspondence to read into the record. As we left this last month, your client had indicated that there was, there were two building permits that were issued. One for the three-unit building that was approved by this Board and reviewed by Site Plan Review, and a second building permit for a four-unit building, which was ultimately built. You did not have that permit. Your client didn't have that permit. We found that permit. It exists. As such, I drafted a letter to Mr. Glenn Hathaway on January 4th. Dear Glenn, I need your help regarding a recent application for the property at 102 Pine Street owned by NNC Rental Properties Corporation. This is an after-the-fact application for a special permit to construct for a four-unit apartment building. As you are aware, this building has already been constructed as a four-unit building. The owner is seeking this after-the-fact approval because the application previously received zoning board relief and site plan review to construct a three-unit building, but built four instead. This new matter was opened at the ZBA's December 21st, 2023 hearing and tabled to our January 18th hearing. My understanding of the history of this site is that after receiving approvals from zoning and site plan review, the owner applied for and received a building permit to construct a three-unit dwelling in conformity with the aforementioned relief and review. The owner states that they subsequently applied for a new building permit to construct a four-unit dwelling at the site, and that your office issued the permit to construct without receiving additional required relief from the ZBA and from Site Plan Review. The Planning Office has shared a copy of this permit with me. The ZBA is asking how we got to this point. By next Friday, January 13th, 2024, please provide me with a timeline of actions taken by the Inspeccional Services regarding this issue. I basically need the facts and your explanation of why, how the permit was issued for the four-unit building without the required relief. I would like to distribute your comments to the Board prior to the meeting so we will have an understanding of how we arrived at this situation so we can make an informed decision on January 18th. Signed by me, Joseph Pereira, Chairman of the Board. I received a letter, and I had a phone call with Mr. Hathaway, who is the Code Enforcement Officer for the City. You saw me do that, didn't you? Received this letter today. Good afternoon, Joe, and members of the Zoning Board. The applicant was granted, and this is 102 Pine Street, Lot N10, Lot 21. The applicant was granted zoner relief to construct a three-family building. During the construction, a permit was applied for to create a fourth unit, which was granted to him by the Building Department. Granting a permit for the fourth unit was clearly in oversight by the Building Department. Please keep in mind that the lot in question was a vacant lot with overgrowth and trash constantly piling up. With the Board, with the Zoning Board's original decision, the owner revitalized this problem lot for the enhancement of the neighborhood. The permit was granted by the Building Department as an error on our part. With that said, the permit for the additional fourth unit was an error on our behalf. Research of the zoning regulations before granting the additional permit should have been done. I would ask the Board to consider relief needed, as it is not the owner's fault. I agree. It's not the owner's fault. I think it kind of speaks for itself. The City made a mistake. Our zoning enforcement officer made a mistake. If you wish to restate your case at this point for the relief you're seeking, we can do so.
I don't know if I need to, if you would like me to. I mean, I think the facts are pretty clear.
It's in the record.
Right. So I'll rest on my prior argument and simply state that my position has not changed. My clients did this with the permission of the City by and through the building permit, which you asked us to produce and has been produced, and I respectfully request the Board grant the after-the-fact relief to maintain the fourth unit as it currently exists on the ground.
Very good. Any questions from the Board at this time, either to the applicant or to myself, to engineering? I think it's clear.
I just wanted to let the Board know that, again, this is a request for a special permit, which is allowed in the Arts Overlay District. So that's what you're moving under, is by granting a special permit. At the time of the initial application of three units, the applicant could have requested four. At the time, all they wanted was three. So this is just another application, like any other, for a special permit in the Arts Overlay District, where you have the ability to grant that permit where you determine that it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than a three-unit building.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. That said, with nothing from the Board, is there anyone here to speak in behalf, in favor of the petition? Is there anyone in the public to speak in opposition to the petition? There hearing none, I would accept a motion from the Board.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we find that the special permit will not be substantially more detrimental to the area and that it be granted.
Okay. As presented, as, yes. Do I have a second on that? Second from Dan. In discussion on the motion, there hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Chairman Pereira, yes.
Thank you.
Let me just say this. You and your husband are not strangers to this Board. This is not the first time we've had something similar to this. This time was the City's mistake. It was the zoning enforcement office's mistake. Please, let's not do this again, okay? Please. All right. You guys are making some nice buildings. You're making improvements to the City. The rules aren't that difficult to get through. Let's play by the rules, okay?
I don't know, please.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wait, is that just, is that just so that it's not substantially detrimental?
No, he's, and that we, and that we.
And that was the parking one, too?
Yep.
Okay.
First order of new business. Item number one, Maria C. Kirkman and Richard A. Bailey. If you picked up a copy of the agenda, we have a mistake in the attorney. Representing on this case is Attorney Mark Levin. The applicant, this is on 608 Herman Street, MAP U10, Lot 230. The applicant seeks a variance to subdivide the lot into two lots, leave in an existing house on one lot, and create in a separate 12,046-square-foot lot located on Corbett Street. As per submitted plans, the property is located in an S single-family zoning district. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Mr. Board. Happy New Year. For the record, Attorney Mark L. Levin, 138 Rock Street, Norfolk, Massachusetts. I'm here presenting the applicants in their request to divide their property on Herman with a parcel to the back on Corbett Street, with a desire to build a new single-family home. Before I get into that, I would like to present a petition that will circulate among the abutters to the property who are all in favor of this application. Let me first explain that this property is in an S district. It requires 12,000 square feet. My client has just shy of 34,000 square feet of land. In fact, had she had just a couple more thousand feet, she could created three separate lots. So we're not asking you to waive any area, but I will focus on the fact that the Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 148, Section 10, under variances, allows you to provide an application and to permit a variance to be issued. And I won't go through the whole thing, but circumstances related to the shape, the structures on the property that involve a hardship, financial otherwise, to the petitioner that is different than the other parcels within the district area and can be granted without any substantial detriment to the public good or nullifying or delegating the bylaws. That's out of the statute. Now, what we have here is a property that is conforming, in fact, much more conforming. If you look at the property, you have an existing dwelling. First off, it's an odd-shaped lot. Second off, it's the largest lot in this district, sometimes almost by three times. My client desires to separate part of the property to build a house on Corbett Street. They attempted to move wherever they could this land, but if they had to move the house to the other side of the lot and tried to meet the setback requirement on the back, they would be encroaching on the frontage. So they elected to place this house in such a way that was, met all the requirements of the zoning board that probably would have interfered or been objectionable to a neighbor by keeping the front yard and side yard requirements in area. But the only thing is a rear yard. There was no way to move, well, obviously you have a structure there, a single-family home, you're not going to take that down to make five extra feet. So we are short on both properties, the rear boundary line by five feet. One in one corner of the new house, and unfortunately, the way the house is built on the other lot, two portions of that house are within five, 20 feet, you know, five feet less than the required. So we believe that you are not doing something that substantially is detrimental to the neighborhood. They've kept the new house in such a way that would meet all the requirements so that a neighbor would not have a problem, or the City wouldn't have a problem with it being too close to the street for any type of viewing and everything. They meet those zoning, but to meet that zoning, the rear yard lot had to be edited to create this. The front of the house on Herman Street, you see, it has an odd-shaped lot that follows around Herman Street because it's just how Herman Street was built. So you have the factors of an unusual-shaped lot. You have the factor that this is the largest lot in the area, almost three times as large as anyone's, or sometimes two times as large, where there is some houses with larger lots. But it conforms to everything but one boundary line. I believe that that is not substantially anything to affect the neighborhood. Would affect the zoning bylaws to grant this. And yes, it would be a financial hardship to my client not to be able to utilize such a large piece of property where only she's asking for one house with a conforming area, conforming frontage, conforming sidelines. It's just the real line boundary line. Thank you.
Well presented, and part of a lesson we usually ask for. Questions from the Board at this point? Nothing? Comments from engineering?
Nope. The only thing I would add is that the proposed dwelling on Corbett, and I don't think the existing dwelling, I don't think the existing dwelling has any rear decks or anything like that.
No.
Okay. So just know that the relief being requested is a rear yard setback of 20 feet. So that will mean any decks, anything. So if there is a deck to be built on that front house, it'll have to be off the side of the house. So you would still be able to do it. It just can't come off the back of the house. 20 feet is 20 feet.
Yeah, they tried to minimize as, as much as they could to.
I don't want it coming through Site Plan Review with a 16-foot deck and a 5-foot rear yard, and then we have to go through this again. So I just want to make sure everybody understands.
I appreciate that, and thank you. Again, my client knew she was putting a smaller house, but an adequate house on a lot that she was only waiving a real line, rear lot line on both properties by five feet. And that's why there is no decks or anything, because that would obviously have made it closer. And whether it's her living there or not in the future, we didn't want to have anyone to be imposed on if they didn't elect to be.
You know, the other thing, Joe, would be that, I just want to make note that there was not an error on Nina's behalf with regards to listing Attorney DeSantis.
Correct.
The attorney DeSantis was listed on the application, so.
He had asked if I.
Nina was correct.
Yeah, Nina was correct. I was just asked.
I didn't say Nina was wrong. I would never say Nina was wrong.
I'm not saying where the error came from. I'm just telling you it wasn't Nina.
No, I was asked if I would attend this meeting for office.
Step in, okay.
Yeah, for his client.
It's very defensive of the clerks in my office.
I love when we go to the bullpen. That's always good. Okay, nothing from the Board, then? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone here to speak in opposition? All the neighbors have already signed on in favor. Therefore, I would turn to the Board for your decision.
I'll make a motion to grant with no further subdivision of the property.
Second. All right. So our petition then, or our motion then, is to grant what you've asked for? Don't come back and try to cut it up again, so. All right, fair enough.
You'd have to tear down the house to make it work.
All right. Therefore, if there's no comment on the petition, Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
And Chairman Pereira, yes. Congratulations. Good luck with it all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night.
Just from my own information, do you know if they're going to go through Land Corps? Or are you going to try taking it out?
I'm going to take it out.
It's just a powerful experience. Either way, right now, that's probably just.
Rather than six months and five months.
I know.
Yeah, we've already talked about it. Thank you. You did say that.
I looked at this, I think, 10 or 15 years ago. And that's part of the reason why I didn't go through with it back then.
All right, moving ahead then. Item number two, Jane Duff, Care of Attorney Peter A. Salino. This is for 951 Slade Street and 1006 Dwelly Street, MAP G15, Lot 35. The applicant seeks a special permit to convert a portion of the existing structure into 15 residential units, as well as a special permit for relief from parking requirements. The property is located in an A2 apartment zoning district.
Good evening. For the record, Peter Salino, on behalf of the owner, applicant, Jamie Duff, who is with me to my immediate right. Mr. Duff's the owner of the property at 951 Slade Street. The applicant in this petition has sought to convert the existing non-conforming structure into 15 residential units. I have in front of me on these boards architectural renderings, and I'd also like to submit these as part of the record for the Board. We have smaller prints that the Board could touch.
Yeah, please.
The design and the proposal is that the 15 units would all be, what I would consider pretty small units. As you can see from the plans, many are in the range of 400 square feet. The client is willing to proceed with an age restriction, if that's a requirement here, 55 and over. His objective here is to create small studio-like apartments that would be furnished and that he'd be offering for lease to veteran and elderly community. In terms of the waivers in the petition, we have submitted a petition showing a one-to-one parking count, which I think has become somewhat customary in the City. We've also indicated in our filing that we need a special permit for the lot coverage requirement. I would submit to the Board that when analyzing the detriment here, it's very important to understand what can be built by right as opposed to what is being petitioned for. Based on the square footage calculations of Mr. Tolman's variance plan that submitted, my client could build nine apartments by right. And as the Board knows, there would be no restriction on the number of bedrooms in those units. So it's respectfully submitted to the Board that if Mr. Duff wanted to, by right, apply for a building permit for nine units, that he would be able to do nine, four, or five-bedroom units, and that this building could be occupied by some 50 or 60 people based on that kind of a calculation. But rather, we submit to you that the 15 units would be more appropriate, more sensitive to the site and the neighborhood, and that the occupants of the unit, coupled with the size of the units, would be an appropriate use of this land and would certainly not be more detrimental than what he could do by right. I think it's also important to highlight the prior history of the property as a daycare or school use, which obviously would be zoning exempt, which I would submit to the Board, is also a very dense use in contrast to elderly people or veteran-type housing. The building is there. It's one level. It has sprinklers, and we think it's an appropriate use of the building to turn it into these 15 studio-style apartments to benefit a portion of our community that's in need of a reasonable housing. I think we can all agree that the price of housing and apartments in Fall River has skyrocketed, and this size and this furnished style of apartment is not something that you regularly come across in these type of projects. Mr. Duff, would you like to add anything to the presentation?
Yes. When I bought this building, I had no intention during the units at first. Committed to veterans, and on Pine Street, make donations every year to the veterans. I was there this Thanksgiving and Christmas. And the way that I talked to the director there, there's no place for these guys to go during immigration now. I was approached by an immigration office to rent the rooms. There's 16 rooms now that are in there. I just didn't want to do that and be in my 60s. I don't want to have, deal with a lot of kids. I have five of my own. So I thought, I talked to him about it. He'd come view the property. They wanted to joint venture something with me, but just the finances ain't there for them. So I figured I'd go ahead and do affordable housing, would be cheap for them to live there. Furnish them all, furnish them all, new kitchens, new bathrooms. Finish the whole place, the bedroom. It's all big, open concepts, laundry facilities. And I thought it'd be best, and for the property, it's a unique property because it's big and it's one level. There's sprinkler systems in it right now. There's alarm system in it. There's ramps already in it in the rear and the front of the building. It was a school for many, many years, housed a lot of schools, schoolchildren. It was a one-way turn, I guess it was a two-way turn into a one-way to alleviate traffic area. I was trying to make it so the units would be confined. Parking would all be on Barclay Street. I did it so you could pull in. There's two crib cuts already there. Pull in, pull out. Plenty of room in the middle to come and go. I thought it was a good fit. I thought it was good for the town. I thought it was good for me. I thought it was good for the veterans and the elderly people right now. It's tough to get apartments that are less than market value, that you can get in one level, swoop right in there. All the hallways are already 51 inches wide. Set up pretty perfect for them. School, I had complaints from the neighbors. They didn't like the school. They said it was a lot of traffic because of buses stop. Parent school, there was never any off-street parking prior to me buying a building for the school. There's a playground here, it's in the front. Target is all around. And now it'll be confined to parking. I put parking on there. Dumpster will be controlled by me also. It's, in my opinion, it's a good fit, but it's up to the Board what they would like. I want to keep my neighbors happy. I think they might have nothing there. But as a matter of right, I could do nine units, no problem. But then I would make them huge, and then it would all just be for gain. The way I'm doing it right now, it's a gain for everybody, I believe. I think it's the highest and best use for the property. It's a new property. It takes the whole corner from Dwelly Street, Barclay, and Slade Street, comes in from that area. And that's really about it. I can, if there's any questions, anyone happy to answer for anybody. And it will be handicap apartments also. And it will be handicap accessible coming in.
Okay, so the intention at this point, so I'm clear, they'll all be handicap accessible?
Yep. Yeah, right now.
And you would be open if we said 55 and up?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, he's agreeing to accept that condition.
What I want, I want veterans' preference first. I talked to Mark down at Pine Street already, director out there, and there's a very, there's a big, big need for it right now. A lot of people just want, it'll be central heat, central air. Everything will be included. There's really nothing they got to bring, but we're bringing it back. There'll be, there's going to be no ovens in the place. There's going to be toaster ovens, no ovens for safety reasons. A lot of them have problems with that. There'll be a burner, four burner, two burner for cooking things. There'll be 30-inch refrigerators. There'll be 36-inch Vandys. There'll be showers, stall, shower, showers. Handicap, one big handicap in the back of the building as a drawing show. There'll be nothing, somebody would have to do that. It's in a dire need, and he states to me it is a dire need for it. Right now, veterans and elderly, elderly just don't want to live in high-rises. And a park's right across the street, public park, nobody down. Good place to come and go. Most of these people don't even have cars. From what I've been told by the director there, that most of them don't even have vehicles. And it's transportation out there, the market ain't far, shop's market ain't far from there. It's actually a good little fit for them right now. And now we're hoping to get a veterans' van so they can go there and get picked up if they have to go to Pine Street or anywhere else to get free food. And I had a lot of, that place touched when I first bought it for one main reason. When I was a child in the Maple Gardens, we went over to that place. We donated food to that place. When I was a child in the Maple Gardens, we went over to that place, we got donated food to that place. And so, call what you want. I called, it was a calling. I thought it was a good spot for me to buy. I thought it was a need for it, but that's what it was. It was a creamy prior. It was a candle workplace, I heard, at one time. It was a daycare for many, many years. This will cut down the traffic big time if it's, if it's studio palms. I tried to keep them so they're small, they're three to four hundred square foot units. There's no more than, there'll be one or two people could live there, I guess. A lot of them set up for one units. If I make even nine units, and I'm not, then you can make them real big. There's, there'll be a minimum, probably four or five people, six people per apartment. They're talking fifty people compared to fifteen or whatever. It would definitely cut down the traffic. I don't think you're gonna have a lot of traffic with people fifty-five and older.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Duffy.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Just as a point of clarification, it seems to me that what you're asking, perhaps the two items could be diametrically opposed to each other. You're asking for over fifty-five, and you're asking for veterans' preference, which at some point, those two things could clash with each other.
Well, I think right now there's a need for veterans that are over.
No, no, but what I'm asking is, just as clarification, if you have a veteran in his forties?
Correct.
Apply for the position. Now, do you want preference to that veteran, or do you want over fifty-five?
I want, I would have preference for a veteran.
Alright, so you're not asking for strictly over fifty-five?
No, I'm asking the board, whatever they, you guys tell me you want to do, I'll do, but that's my, that's my main reason I did this for, was for veterans. I'm saying fifty-five and older. I just said it because it's like, it seems like that's the magic age of people wanna, if they're not the same.
But you understand what I'm saying. They could come to a point where, you know, you want veterans' preference, but the veteran could be under fifty-five.
Correct. I agree with you.
So in that case, I'm still not clear. What are we asking for?
We're asking for fifteen studio units.
No, I understand.
And if the board wants to impose an age restriction on its approval, he will accept that, but it is not his first preference.
Okay, alright, thanks. Thank you.
And we could, yeah, we could not.
Or you do a combination of the two.
Right, okay.
Veterans' status are over fifty-five.
Any other questions from the board?
Just, I don't know if anyone can answer this, but with, with the demand for the immigrant housing right now, that so many places are being taken over by the state for occupancy. Would that, if we put a restriction on, would, would the state be able to override and still require occupancy?
That's an Alan Ramsey question, Mr. Cawkins.
Yeah.
I would say no, because it's a zoning issue. This isn't a hotel. Now, hotels are allowed by right in this district. So if he would want to convert it to a hotel, then all bets might be off. So there are a number of uses in the A2 district, like a boarding house, for instance, or a lodging house, that are allowed uses in the A2.
Right.
That I think would clearly be more detrimental than, you know, single unit, units, the way that they're being proposed. This is a fairly unique building to find in this A2 district that is surrounded by a number of multifamily dwellings. Some of the density is low as one unit per less than a thousand square feet. I think like nine hundred and thirty-three square feet per unit is probably the most dense. There's some pretty small lots that, that don't provide parking either, so. I think with the restrictions, two restrictions, I would think the board should contemplate the over fifty-five and veterans. You would need to qualify for one of the two of those. And the, the proposed parking at a rate of one-to-one, which would be in line with what you've allowed in the past, and that's with no discussion of what's available on street here as well. So I do know that there is a need for this type of housing in the city. It's a very peculiar property that has an existing structure that can meet these requirements. I would not want to see this become a nine-unit, four-bedroom-per-unit building.
Right.
You could actually put a second floor on this and, and go to nine units and put as many bedrooms in it as you want. So when you are contemplating the special permit, understand you're not making a determination that the proposed use would not be detrimental. It's that it would be not more detrimental. So contemplate that as well after you listen to some of Butters and people that may be opposed to the project.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, my client took some photos of the parking situation today on the street, so in analyzing that permit, I'd like to submit those for the record as well, as it relates to the detriment component, because I think based on the photos provided, in addition to the one-to-one, at least this afternoon, there was available on-street parking.
Also in your package, you'll see that Chris Pirano, who's the assistant planner, always puts together these little one-pages for you?
Yeah.
That details the past relief. So since nineteen eighty-three, this building has been a candle manufacturer. Candle-making shop converted to a woodworking shop. Existing building is just a general commercial business, an ambulance service. Granted with conditions to demolish the building and construct a school or professional office. And then most recently, the special permit that was granted to allow the re-institution of the original non-conforming use of a car wash. If you remember in the small little area in the back, used for auto detailing, the garage portion of this building. So this would be in the remaining portion of the building.
Yeah.
That's all I have to add.
Alright, very good. Thank you. I'll go to correspondence on this. We did receive a petition of objection to nine fifty-one Slade Street. We, the Butters and neighbors of the property at nine fifty-one Slade Street, Fall River, Massachusetts, owned in the name of Jamie Duff of nine fifty-one Wilbur Ave, Swansea, Massachusetts, who have filed, who has filed a petition for a special permit to be heard by the Zoning Board of Appeals on Thursday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Hereby state our opposition to the petition for special permit on numerous grounds, and in particular, because of increased traffic, certain, certain to result in our neighborhood if the fifteen-unit apartment complex is allowed to be created. Increased noise in our neighborhood, increased congestion in our neighborhood, the unsuitability of the use sought by the special permit to our neighborhood, which contain, which contains of nearly exclusively single and multifamily homes. Nearly all the multifamily homes being three-family homes along, sorry, Beasley Street, and Slade Street, and Dwelly Street, on which nine fifty-one Slade Street site. The unsuitability of fifteen, fifteen small studio apartments being put into the existing building as being proposed with suitable parking for more than one required, and none for visitors or guests to the apartments with, with more than one individual residing there. Beasley Street is now a one-way street, one-way north because of the heavy traffic and parking congestion, and the proposal will worsen the traffic in the neighborhood and make street parking nearly impossible without any way to remedy the congestion in parking. The proposal will be detrimental to the neighborhood. It will not be consistent with the scope and type of use around in which it is all residential, single-family, multifamily buildings. On the lots, it provides sufficient space for their occupants with sufficient parking, and otherwise, proposed use is not consistent at all with the character and structure of the neighborhood, which has no large multifamily unit buildings. It is signed by a large number of people. I did not count them, but there are a large number of people here, including somebody I think lives in the park. So noted, it's in the record. That being the case, is there anyone from the general public here tonight that wishes to speak in behalf of the petition?
This is in behalf of the project.
This is in behalf.
Oh, David, sorry.
If you want to, though.
If you want to, we'll take you.
Come on down.
No one wishes to speak in behalf? Anyone to speak in opposition? Please identify yourself and your address.
Attorney John Mitchell, one oh five Bank Street, Fort Bend, Massachusetts. And with me is George Mello.
George Mello, thirty-three Barclay Street, forty-one Barclay Street, and ten twenty Slade Street. Been in this residence since nineteen ninety-seven, thirty years. I've heard Mr. Duff talk, and there's some things that I would like to address as well. When it came to the school, I was the one that petitioned to have that street converted to a one-way, because it was crazy, parents going up, parents going down. There was verbal arguments. People were parking people's driveways. There was a chaos on that street. I petitioned the whole neighborhood, and we came in front of the board, and we converted to a one-way. That's number one. When it comes to the rest, when he's saying about elderly and fifty-five and over, we would like to know exactly what he's gonna put in, because he told the whole neighborhood it was gonna be offices. That it was gonna be for his autogals, detail shop. And the whole neighborhood is now is upset because he's putting fifteen residential units. He comes in and greets the whole neighborhood like he's, hi, 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 Happy New Year. And then behind, he backstabs everybody. He was never truthful to nobody in the neighborhood.
Alright, stick to the facts. No defamation.
No, I'm not being defamation.
So set I, okay? Please don't do it that way.
The other thing is on, on the parking. It does get congested on the weekends and the days. The pitches that he's got is probably about twelve o'clock. Everybody's at work, but I get pitches when people are home on the weekends and at night, when the street's congested. How about when there's baseball games and softball games on the spring and the summertime? Nobody can park.
Does every house in a neighborhood, including the multifamily homes, have driveways, off-street parking?
Some do, some don't.
Okay, so some don't, okay. Alright. And, and his petition has fifteen parking spaces on it.
What about when there's visitors?
Hang on, whoa, 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 whoa. If you want to speak, you just have to identify yourself, your name, your address, et cetera. So these gentlemen have the floor right now. Let's hear them out before we go. Anything else, sir?
No, just a couple of things on behalf of the neighborhood, and then a lot of the neighbors want to speak. First of all, as proposed, it doesn't meet dimensional requirements. It doesn't meet unit requirements. The parking will be a problem even with nine units in there. I know there's a general sense, this seems to be, that one per unit, but it's not the zoning. The zoning is two. And this is in an atypical area. It's heavily, heavily congested. There's a lot of multifamilies there. There's a real problem with parking just day-to-day. People have trouble parking there. They have trouble finding spots. And then during baseball season, it's almost impossible, because the park is occupied at night, particularly at the time people come home from work. We understand there's other uses in A2. This is not the use the neighbors want to see, and they certainly have a right to express their opinion. They live there. They have to live with this. They're the people who are gonna be there, and there's a reason for these regulations, including the parking, particularly the parking in a city like Fall River. And I don't think people can be, you know, if they don't have a driveway, it's because of the way the neighborhood developed. A lot of these houses don't have. They're not big enough to have driveways. They've never had them. So people have to park on the street. So I do think, you certainly got a lot, there's eighty-eight people who signed by my count, all in the immediate neighborhood. There's no one from North Main Street or Middle Street or anything. Everyone's immediately in that neighborhood, and I think that's a strong expression to this board. And again, they're asking you to use your discretion and find that somehow there's some benefit to the neighborhood. It's not taking away from the character of the neighborhood. That's the definition of a special permit. And clearly here, it is, and it's certainly reinforced by all these people coming in telling you, we lived here, we have lived here, and this is not what we want to see in our neighborhood. People over fifty-five, there's a good chance there'll be couples, even in a small unit. People double up in studios. Is that gonna be two cars? What about guests? I don't buy this that at fifty-five or even veterans, they don't have cars. They will have guests. People at fifty-five probably aren't working, and they'll have people in and out all day. So there is a concern with traffic in the neighborhood, the parking. There's not gonna be enough parking, no matter what they say. Fifteen spots for fifteen people will never work. There'll always be some spillover, and it'll keep the neighborhood congested. As far as the prior use, the neighborhood didn't like those, and that doesn't justify, well, so that justifies now allowing this because they lived with that? I mean, is there a tendency in this city just to impose on people and continuously say, well, you didn't like that, but because you didn't like that, and it was there, we're gonna let you suffer again? These people bought homes, a lot of them very recently, a lot of them are young, and they're here asking their city, that they pay taxes to, not to allow an out-of-town developer to come in under the auspices today of it's gonna be for veterans or whatever. And it may not be, and even if it is, it's still gonna be crowded. It's gonna be overcrowded in our neighborhood. And there's just a, there's a distrust, and it wasn't a personal matter, but work's being done on that property. The building inspector's been called and has not responded. There's no permits issued.
There is.
There's been questions about the variance that was allowed and how that's being used. So there's, there is a distrust. It's not based on personality or dislike. It's based on experience over the last half-year or so. And the neighbors don't trust that they're being told this, and that'll be complied with. There has been a lack of enforcement on the city. A number of the neighbors told me they've called repeatedly and haven't had calls returned, haven't been given the courtesy of being told there'd be follow-up. And it creates distrust. So people are here, not only with that distrust, but also they live there. They're gonna live there. No one on this board lives in the area. No one, I don't live there, but they're here telling you, this is our neighborhood, and we don't want to see this, and you have that discretion to support them. So with that, I know a number of the other neighbors do have comments, so Jeff, you want to start?
Hi, my name's Jeff Baroso. I'm on forty-eight Bosley Street.
Yeah.
So I have a complaint. So it's showing, he wants to put a dumpster right in, so that'll be right in my backyard, and a set, a set of lights that's been hitting my windows, my sun window. I called Glenn since July. He keeps giving me the runaround. Keeps saying that solar power lights, there's no solar power lights. You got the pictures?
Yeah. They've already done. They can sit. Whoever, whoever's spoken can sit.
Yeah, yeah. Gentlemen, again, so we don't have a ton of congestion. If you've already spoken, please grab a seat, and if we get back around, you have something you'd like to say, we can, we can bring you back up. Okay, so, so where are we in this picture with the, with the two lights? This is your, taken from your house?
That's Wilbur. Do you mind if I call my house? That's Wilbur Street. That's Wilbur Street. I didn't have a copy. I have a picture that was hitting my house directly on all the windows.
And, and what are these lights lighting, Mr. Duffy?
They were inspected. They were, we did pull permits. We have permits currently right now. As he's saying about the thing, his father-in-law, he's not the owner of the property. I talked to him. Very nice man. He said one of the lights shine near his bedroom window, so what we did, we went up there. We turned it right, as you look the picture, completely towards, not even on, on the other opposite direction. There's only one on that side, or they move the opposite direction. We can shield the lights. They're low-voltage lights. No problem. I'll shield the lights for them. Whatever he needs me to do, I will do. I'll take the light out of there. It doesn't, it doesn't, I just did it for security reasons. We've got cameras around the whole place. We've had problems over there already. The building's been vacant for a long, long period of time.
Okay, and, and what are we looking at with this one, just so I understand?
So he just put that up. There was no permits. I kept calling Glenn. I told, he kept telling me, there's no wires running through there. You can see on the concrete column, there's a pipe running, electricity running through there. Kept telling me it's solar, solar panel lights, solar power lights.
Okay.
That hits my house. My sun, I gotta put sun to blacken it out.
Alright, so, I mean, understand, the building department does not work for us, so I can't go back to the, I think you're kind of going to character of, you know, what, what you're dealing with. I can't fix, this, this board cannot fix what we're dealing, what, what this, what's happening here. If he pulled an electrical permit, if he pulled an electrical permit, he can, he can, he can do that.
Right on top of my house? That's my house.
Yeah.
That white house.
Yeah.
He gets to go home and sleep. My kid, the light bothers him.
Yeah.
It bothers my father-in-law. He's no man.
Okay.
That's not right.
If I can reiterate, there were permits pulled, was inspected. If the gentleman doesn't want the lights here, I'd be more than happy to take the lights out of there. I'd be more than happy to take them out.
Since July, I've been asking for somebody to come out, and Glenn keeps giving me the runaround.
That's untrue.
That hasn't got to do with the proposal. This is.
Well, it's part of it.
No, this is an existing problem. I mean, are those lights part of your proposal?
No.
But that's in that parking lot where he wants to put those cars, where people don't want to live there.
They'll have to go through site plan review, and lighting and landscape is something to look through.
I tried everything.
No, 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 no.
Glenn even told me to come.
Listen, this is not.
Listen, this is not Glenn. You didn't call engineering, you didn't call planning. If Glenn hasn't responded to you, I suggest that you call the administrative office and tell them that Glenn has not responded to you.
He keeps giving...
But Glenn is not the zoning board of appeals, so if you have a question or a comment in relation to the relief that's being requested, by all means, continue to bring it up.
So...
Lighting is something that will get handled...
Right.
If the zoning issues were resolved and it went to site plan review. If it doesn't go to site plan review, now you're on your own to deal with Glenn to resolve in some type of a nuisance situation that you're dealing with.
Okay, and then what about the dumpster behind my house?
So, uh, through site plan review...
Again, yeah.
We will require screen dumpsters, any type of, you know, where, where they're located, and those are the types of things that we look at.
Because people go in my backyard for parties in the summer, and we're going to smell that?
That's something that we can address during site plan review, we could potentially have him move it closer to his own building.
Yeah, hi, uh, Tony De Silva, I own twenty-five Barclay Street, uh, so I'm right across the street from him. I'm opposed to the fifteen-unit apartments because, um, it's, they're really small units, from what I can see and hear and hear. It's going to bring a transient type of crowd. It really is, it's going to be a lot of turnover. I know that for a fact because I've owned them. There's a tremendous amount of turnover. And as far as the veterans, I mean, I hate to say it, but they usually, usually the worst type of tenants. I hate to say it because they usually have underlying issues that's going to bring a lot of problems. They, they need, they need to not be inspired, people might disagree, and I know there might be one or two veterans that are, that are good, but in my dealings with them, it's never been good, it's never been good. I would prefer to see larger units there. Reason why I, I believe larger units would be better, just look at your street. You got the, on the, on the same side here is a three-unit, another three-unit, another three-unit. So if you wanted to do a nine-unit there, I'd find that better. Now, if it's, if it's two and three-bedroom units, they're not going to get sixty to eighty people. Because I have twenty units and I don't have sixty to eighty people in my, all my buildings combined. You're going to get a lot less people. So I think, uh, if you mix units and they're like two or three-bedroom units, I think that's more into what the neighborhood is. I'm not, I won't be against them, you know, for doing something like that, but to put, build like the fifteen units, I mean, some, some units, if I'm looking at that correctly, they're not going to have any windows. I mean, because it is whole right side, if I'm looking at it, it's a garage. So then if you put a unit between the garage wall, well, on the inner wall, that, that particular unit is not going to have any windows. So it's a closet with a kitchen and a bathroom? And that's just doesn't work. Now, I would rather see three-unit, you know, three bedrooms or something to that effect. I have three-bedroom units, I have two-bedroom units. They are not that. The one-bedroom and the studios, they are problems. And, and, and the, those particular setups do not fit the neighborhood. None of us, none of us have studio or, or one-bedroom units, or all two and three-bedroom units.
Or family.
And all family. And as far as the parking, parking is hell on that street. Because when I bought that building, I had to put a parking lot in because people couldn't get, my tenants couldn't get in. Now, if you, if, if you build the nine units, we are still going to lose two spots because of the curb cut. So while the photo that came in...
Four, it was in four.
Well, maybe, maybe four, so we lose four, four spots. So during, during work, uh, working hours, just somewhere there. When you go there on a Saturday, you're not getting in, you're not parking in there, and you're lucky if, if they don't leave enough room, you're not getting out of your driveway. Like George, he kept, "But you got boxed in, I got boxed in," and that's just by the people with the baseball, going for baseball. I mean, again, I don't want to, you know, he has a right to, to, you know, to, to have a business and everything, and if he does a right, I am going to support it, you know, if it's... But it's got to be a family-type building, that's what it has to be. It's what the neighborhood is, not like this eyesore...
Okay.
That's going to be there.
Got you.
I appreciate the time, though.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Had you considered the nine unit?
I thought, I didn't think it'd be good, no. I, I first came out here for was, uh, at first, there's two curb cuts here, anyhow, um, everything was a controlled site this way, I disagree with everything he said, with the veterans, I disagree with everything he said about the units, that's my opinion. Uh, I think it's a lot easier, uh, and less detrimental having units that I propose to do that are furnished, that are something unique for the city of Fall River, there's nothing like it. Furnished apartments for veterans and elderly, there's nothing like it.
Yep.
And go to any vet, any, any veteran's place on Pine Street or else, I'll tell you right off the bat, there's nothing like it. They can't go anywhere. It's better than doing a motel or lodging. What's your zone for that?
I can add, Mr. Chairman, so I know the, the, uh, gentleman has spoken in opposition. These units will need to meet the building code.
Mm-hmm.
And if they can't meet the building code with regards to egress and natural light and all those things, then they can't be built, or they can't be occupied, so. There are other permitting hurdles to get through beyond what the zoning board...
Yeah, exactly. Um, I know there's a bunch of people who want to speak. All I can ask is if somebody else has already said what you want to say, just say, "I agree with whomever," please. And I'm going to do something I normally don't do and use my three-minute clock. Anybody else want to speak in opposition? Sir?
I, I'm sorry, I can barely hear you.
The problem with lighting, I mean, I already said we had to go somewhere special for it. That picture they showed shines directly in my bedroom, all three of those lights.
That's fine, I'll take care of it. We'll put shields on them. But they were inspected and they did, they're low, they're low, they're low voltage lights, we can definitely put a shield, that's no problem.
Because I wake up at four thirty every morning, and they're on all night, and they're at me.
The only complaint I ever heard is from Jeff, but if you, I didn't know you had, you would have told me, I would fix it immediately. I'll shut them down. I'll shut them down till I get the approval, I get the approvals already on them, I'll shut them down.
And I commend you for the benefit.
I think, I, I don't need that I did it, boys.
Sir, before you sit down, could we just get your name and address, please?
Two seventy Wil...
Okay, thank you. Sir, name and address, please?
Hi, um, Neil Texer, seventy-three Barclay Street.
Seventy-three Barclay, okay. Where do you fall in, in line with this?
So I'm on the corner of Barclay and Wally.
Okay, okay.
So across the street from the property at the opposite end. Um, pretty much just, yes, I agree with some of the same concerns as far as, um, parking is just extremely rough. You're never going to find, you, it's difficult to find spaces, people had to add driveways to be able to find, um, parking. Just concerned as well about the number of units that are going to be put in, so pretty much everything that is on this state.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. I live at Donnie Lee, I live at nine seven seven Slade Street, and I agree.
Okay. What would you like to say, sir?
I just agree with your say about the parking.
Okay. All right, so parking's your, your biggest concern?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Counsel?
Just to summarize, I do have some photographs of parking, you know, showing the problem, and also, um, curb cuts, no parking here at corner sign. And just to summarize, I mean, I think the point is, they didn't come out here to attack Mr. Duff, but there is a problem with what's been operated there. There was a variance last day granted for detailing that they don't believe was abided. And overall, I mean, you've got a neighborhood in here on a question of what is best for the neighborhood, what attracts them, and you can argue, "Well, this could happen, that could happen," but I don't think anyone's going to run in and put a hotel there or other uses. You're faced with this decision, and we do ask, um, on behalf of the neighbors, that this petition be denied tonight, that it's not appropriate for this neighborhood. The neighbors have made it clear, they live there, they understand the neighborhood, and it doesn't seem to be inappropriate use, whatever problems are with housing in the city. I don't think the neighbors of the, uh, father, uh, true park area should be the ones to bear that burden at this time. So, we thank you for your time and consideration and, uh, ask that you deny the petition.
Attorney Mitchell, thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I respond, please?
Please.
Okay, uh, taking the arguments in order, so there's no question that the building doesn't comply with setbacks and there's not enough parking, which is the very reason we're here.
Yep.
Second, we're here on a special permit request, not a variance request. The standard is lower for the board. Third, the prior relief granted was a special permit, not a variance for the auto detailing. Fourth, I think, like a lot of these hearings, it got far afield, uh, in terms of what's before the board. So the narrow issue before the board is whether or not the proposal of my client is substantially more detrimental than what could otherwise be there. In this instance, I would submit to the members of the board that, number one, Mr. Duff put out the veteran restriction and the age restriction, but you won't find that in my petition. So if the neighborhood doesn't, the neighborhood does not like those conditions, fine, we're not necessarily asking for it. We thought that would be an appropriate approach to the problem, to narrow the population down. Frankly, I can't believe some of what I heard tonight, and I've been at a lot of these hearings over the last twenty years, but everyone has the right to speak their opinion on different classes of people. Um, so if the restriction on age or veteran status is an issue, no problem, we can take that off the table, we thought that was being conciliatory. Uh, and I do think, lastly, and the most important point I can drive home for the board tonight is, what is allowed by right is very important. Um, I've represented Mr. Duff, the out-of-town developer in a variety of respects, and I think he will build what's allowed by right. And I don't say that in a threatening way, I say that in a matter-of-fact way. And what's allowed by right is denser and worse for the neighborhood than what the proposal is. And with that, I will yield.
Can I say something else?
Please, yes.
I, 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 I just want to touch some base on this. As of the, the lighting, only thing I ever heard before was Jeff made a comment, remove the light, this gentleman's up, we'll take care of that. Uh, we're going site plan review, but it wasn't inspected. The second thing was on curb cuts. There's two pre-existing curb cuts right now, we designed the parking around the curb cuts to come in, to come out. So that's definitely not true. Um, those are the two things I vote down quickly, and there was pull, pull, there was permits pulled and inspected, thank you.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? And, and, and thank you, I mean, we definitely, we get the flavor of the concern of the neighborhood, absolutely. And I know that having a park there makes it, it's great to have the park there until it's baseball season. So, unless you're playing and walking across the street, it's, um, it's tough. So we do thank you all for coming out and sharing your, sharing your thoughts. Um, anything else from the board right now before we, we delve in? Um... Did you want to say something else, sir? Oh, no, I thought you did, all right.
The other thing we did want to point out is we have the field card, and the only permit we see recently was one for doors, so. And it is a complaint, and again, it, I realize it doesn't have to do with this particular petition, but it does have to do with whatever this board orders, there's tremendous discretion in the developer. You can only handle so much. And this neighborhood is here expressing their concern, they're just on a much smaller special permit use. They've got no cooperation from the city, not this board, but from the city in enforcing that. And they're concerned that on a much larger use, with a lot more discretion once it's enacted, and it's nice to say there's a site plan and there's this and that, but that's immediate, and over time, things are moved and things are done differently.
Well, that happens with everybody, that happens with single-family homes.
And that's why they're asking it to be considered here. Because this is not an ordinary use.
Understood.
And it's very peculiar for this neighborhood.
I urge anyone who has reached out to inspectional services and has not gotten satisfaction, as, as the city engineer and planner has said, reach out to, reach out to the administration. Don't hesitate and say, "I can't get a call back, I, I've called Mr. Hathaway on, on the following times, I need help." Um, I'm not saying, you know, go to the principal and tell on somebody, but that's, that's really the way it is. So, I'm not, I'm not trying to make light of it, but, um, and site plan review, you know, does have teeth, and I, and I think your attorney Mitchell, you know, realizes that. You know, what happens ten years later? That's the tough part, people change things, people throw up decks without getting permits, people add to the garage without, without getting permits. Happens every day in the city, which is, which is frustrating. And, you know, then they come in and ask for any further...
That's why we're here, asking this board at the outset...
I, I hear you.
To use its discretion, it's discretionary, it's not required, and, um, your court's using the general public.
Dan, is it possible, uh, I'm just looking at the plan, I didn't, I didn't speak to the engineer that drew this, but is, is there the potential to, let's look at the southerly twenty-foot driveway?
Yeah.
You would replace that twenty-foot driveway with two additional spaces, so only leave one curb opening, the one to the north. Come in, you could potentially get two more parking spaces in that twenty-foot space. You could also, directly across from that, if you relocate the dumpster, get two more spaces, and relocate the dumpster closer to being on the other side where the existing driveway is in three spaces for the detail facility.
Yep.
And you would have the ability, parallel parking along the driveway, which is twenty-eight feet wide, to leave seven parking spaces for the detail, and still leave room for the drive aisle for that as well.
That would be no problem. And site plan review would dictate that, and I'd go along with any of that.
Yeah, I mean, I think you could easily get an additional four off-street parking spaces, eliminate one curb opening, and relocate the dumpster.
Yep.
Um, and that's something that we can, you can condition that, the board that way, um, with a minimum number of spaces of an additional four, so nineteen spaces total, and relocate the dumpster.
Yeah, I mean, the dumpster, I can certainly see this gentleman's concern.
Yeah, we would make a move, dumpster is part of site plan review anyway, so you could easily create two parking spaces there. Just a thought.
We've got to turn to the board. Now's your chance for questions, if there's no more questions, uh, we have to, we have to act. A lot of people came out tonight, a lot of people want to go home.
Mr. Chairman, just listening to arguments on both sides, um, to your comment, attorneys, we know that what is being proposed would not be substantially more detrimental to what could be. Um, from what I'm hearing from the neighbors, that isn't true. The neighbors seem to think that multifamilies being built there would be more preferable to what's being proposed this evening, which is Mr. Duff's right to build without coming here or anything else. Um, based upon that, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I would make a motion that we deny the permit.
We have a motion to deny. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion on the motion. Hearing no discussion, Ricky Zahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
And Chairman Pereira, yes?
I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Everyone, thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Attorney Mitchell, good to see you again, it's been a while. Item number three, Marino Z. Benavides, K. Rov, attorney Peter A. Salino, seventy-four and seventy-eight, uh, Pelham Street. Map F-22, Lot fourteen, the applicant seeks a variance for a leave for lot coverage and setback requirements in an R4, two-family zoning district, in order to divide the existing lot into two lots, leaving the two fa, the two existing single-family dwellings on one lot and constructing a duplex on the second lot, per submitted plans.
Thank you, for the record, Peter Salino, on behalf of Mr. Benavides. Uh, the board's probably familiar with this petition in the sense that it was previously submitted a little bit different conceptually and then withdrawn. Um, my client and his engineer have reworked the site to, uh, create a different proposal, which consists of a two-lot subdivision, uh, leaving the existing single-family dwellings on what is labeled as Lot One on the plan. That, uh, lot consists of ten, ten thousand four hundred seventy-two square feet. Lot Two, uh, consists of eight thousand square feet. So Lot Two is completely conforming with the exception of lot coverage. Uh, per the, uh, plan, the lot coverage is fifty-five percent on Lot Two, it's supposed to be thirty per the zoning. So as a consequence, the waiver sought on Lot Two is lot coverage. Frontage conforms, area conforms, setback in use all conform. With regard to Lot One, uh, we have the same issue of lot coverage as well as setbacks. Um, in my petition, I've indicated that I think the hardship of this lot is really the existing, uh, structures that are there now. It's a peculiar setup to me in the sense that you have these single families sort of built, hugging the perimeter, uh, east, north, and northwest, uh, leaving this large lot with, uh, this empty space that fronts on Pelham Street.
Mm-hmm.
And as a consequence, I've submitted in my, uh, paperwork that the hardship is the inability to use the area that is Lot Two as a result of the existing structures and their proximity to the sidelines. Um, I don't think it's detrimental to the neighborhood in the sense that it's consistent with other uses in the neighborhood, and further, the proposed construction of the two-family dwelling, uh, has two off-street parking spaces per duplex... has two off-street parking spaces per duplex unit, so the customary arguments relative to parking, traffic, and travel, I think, can be allayed as a result of those four parking spaces. Do you have anything you want to add to that, Mr. Benavides? Okay. So I have nothing further to add to that. I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, Mr. Benavides is here, if anyone has any questions.
So we have two single-family dwellings, one up in the back of the dogleg, the existing one down on the front, number 78. I think when you were in before, you had talked about putting a unit into the single-stall garage. Is that off the table now?
It is off the table.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, so the existing one-stall garage remains a garage, the existing two-stall garage remains a garage?
Okay. Mr. Benavides is indicating that on that top-right corner, be the northeast corner, there's an apartment above that garage.
It's existing.
The two-stall garage.
Well, that's, the plan and the petition are flawed, then.
Okay.
So that's not what was presented. I don't even think on the first time.
That was not mentioned on the first time.
I don't know, does anybody have the original plan? You might want to table this to get it resolved. He's saying there's a unit above that garage already.
Existing owner lived there for over 60 years.
I'm not saying they didn't, but I'm just saying it's not shown on the plan. And that makes all the difference in the world with the unit density on this proposed lot. Again, we don't have, we don't have the original plan.
Are we talking about the back house or the front house?
The front house.
The front house?
The front house.
There's a unit there, right.
Yes, existing single-family in the front.
Right.
We're talking about the two-stall garage.
All right, I'm confused. Okay, we're talking about the front.
Mr. Tom, can you add?
So.
Is there a unit in the back, on top of that?
No, no.
So there are going to be two units?
Yes.
On Lot 1?
Correct.
One in number 78, one in 74. There's no other residential components in any of these other structures.
It's a two-stall garage, and it was used to be a pipe repair job.
The difference between this and the old plan and the previous one that was filed is the previous plan was to divide the property into three.
It's a three.
Right.
Right, but this is just a series of the fact that there was a garage above that garage in the back.
Because the front one has the garage.
The front one, I believe, is number 78. If I read correctly, has a unit above it, which is labeled existing single-family dwell.
Yep.
Yeah.
My mistake. Who asked the question at first about?
No, I only asked because I believe in the original petition, and I could be wrong, it's jujitsu, that...
I was going to use that.
Yeah, it's too late.
I figured it was overused lately.
I had to be too. I thought the existing one-stall garage was going to be converted into a unit in the original plan.
No, I don't think so, but I don't recall. Doesn't matter, it was withdrawn.
No, it was simply to separate the two existing single families and create the new lot for the duplex.
Okay.
So three lots rather than the two shown on this one.
And then that access easement, that, the area of the proposed 1,417 square foot accessing utility easement is part of Lot 2, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's already, that's existing paved area.
Right, right. But the easement that's going to be recorded will be to the owner of Lot 1 for...
Right. It'll benefit Lot 1, burden Lot 2.
Okay.
Yes.
That's creative. That was a compliment.
No, the only thing I would say is that the lots are conforming, frontage and area-wise.
I mean, the only setback relief is the nine feet to the two-stall garage, right? Everything else is in existing, aren't conforming.
Yeah.
Yes.
Everybody absorbed this? Any questions?
It's a lot of ink.
A lot of ink. Questions from the board? I'll say this is an improvement from where we were last time, so... I'll get back to you guys. Anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to the petition? Okay. They're hearing none. I come back to this august body.
Dan, what do you think?
I think it's a drastic improvement, and when you actually, again, looking at it, there's a lot of ink in this little, but when you look at the actual relief being requested?
Yeah.
It's lot coverage and then sent back to the existing two-stall garage, which is almost minimal. They could probably actually convolute the lot line to eliminate the nine-foot setback, but for making a better-shaped lot for Lot 2, I can understand why they did it, but they could have grabbed that square footage somewhere else with some foolish jog that you would never want on a lot, so. I mean, it is minimal, for sure. As we keep stating on, with how site plan review has been instituted, all these lot coverage issues date back to the dinosaurs, right? With our zoning. Now through site plan review, where we make applicants account for their impervious area by infiltrating into roof drain, drywall chambers, taking all of the roof area, what I would suggest is that both lots be subject to site plan review, so that we have the ability to get some of that impervious area from the existing structures into something in the ground as well, to try to lighten up the load for the impervious area for the whole site. And then, as always, I'm sure, remember Frank will make the condition that these lots are to be, not to be further subdivided, so the applicant doesn't have the ability to come back and now try to cut up the two single families.
Right.
What if there's a motion to approve that site plan is inherent within the motion?
Absolutely. Yeah, well, it would definitely be for the new home, not necessarily for the set, I mean, for the other lot that has the existing structures.
Okay. But while it's here...
And it's on the table.
Because they are asking for a lot coverage.
And push that through site plan review as well.
So that's one way to accommodate the lot coverage issue, is by requiring something for stormwater management.
Because there's a lot of pavement out there.
Yeah.
Where we going, guys?
I'll make a motion to grant with site plan review for both lots and no further subdivision.
One second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second? Any discussion on that? Ricky, you look like you still have a question.
No, in fact, I'm good.
Okay. In that case, on the motion, Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
And Chairman Pereira, yes?
Thank you.
Item number four. I know I'm going to mispronounce your name. Christopher Mungian?
Mungian.
There you go. Care of Attorney Thomas P. Calorin, who is not in Somerset tonight. 301 America Street, map E-08, Lot 11. The applicant seeks a variance to divide the existing parcel into two lots. The applicant wishes to raise the existing freestanding garage, leaving the existing dwelling on the first lot, and to construct a new single-family dwelling on the newly-created lot. The applicant seeks a variance for relief for frontage, minimum lot area, minimum lot coverage, minimum side yard setback, and an R8 single-family zoning district.
Counsel. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Thomas Calorin represents Christopher Mungian, who's the property owner of 301 America Street, and Mr. Mungian obviously is here with me this evening. As stated by the chairman, we're coming before you tonight to subdivide this property into two lots, leaving the existing dwelling on proposed Lot Number 1 and creating Lot Number 2, which would have a proposed single-family dwelling constructed thereon. We, excuse me, that's, this division of the land would require frontage for, excuse me, a variance for frontage, lot size, lot coverage, and then a side yard setback variance for the new internal lot line only. Both parcel, the home from, that'll be located on Lot Number 1, would have a setback of around 12 point, I think it's four feet, and newly-created or newly-proposed House Number 2 would have a setback, interior setback of 10 feet from the newly-created lot line. As part of this proposal, Mr. Mungian would raise the existing garage that sits pretty much flush up against America Street, as you can see, as shown on the plan. This really creates a situation where there's really only about one off-street parking space for the existing dwelling. With the elimination of that garage, we'd be able to create a driveway on parcel Number 1 that can certainly accommodate at least two off-street parking spaces. As you can see on Lot 2, we'd also propose a driveway along America Street that'll accommodate two off-street parking spaces, so that we can provide off-street parking that complies with the existing zoning bylaw. As to the hardship for this lot, this lot and the uniqueness of it, again, we've got an existing dwelling that's been there for quite a number of years, that is situated really to one side of the property, leaving kind of a dead or vacant area off to the other side that's really unusable for this property. This is a neighborhood that consists pretty much predominantly of single-family dwellings. Mr. Mungian is not looking to put any kind of multifamily structure there, but we think that this is a best and most practical use of the property, again, giving the location of the existing single-family dwelling, where it's shifted over to one side on the property. And again, with the elimination of the garage, this creates a, I would suggest to the board, a better off-street parking situation than one that currently exists at the property today. So again, the relief that would be needed would be frontage for both particular lots, as well as lot size, coverage, and then again, the setback variance, side yard, but that's just for the newly-created lot internally. We're not looking for any relief, you know, in terms of setbacks as to any of the other neighboring or putting properties. With that, I'll certainly yield to the board and be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Well, before I ask any questions, my comment is, you're creating the two smallest lots in the neighborhood, and you're creating lots that we need, you know, a sideline setback from, which isn't happening on a lot of other lots in the neighborhood, save one that's across the street from you that's got a house kind of squeezed onto it. And that might be a smaller lot, but, you know, just going to flavor of the neighborhood, it's a lot of variances. Lot coverage, sideline setback, blah, 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 and frontage. It's a lot.
I rec...
And, you know, I, I've been on your side of the table a lot more than I've been on this side of the table, and this is a tough one to ask for. I'd be, I appreciate you trying to come up with a hardship. I appreciate it.
I recognize the concerns expressed by the chairman. As stated, there is a lot across the street that is pretty much comparably sized to the two lots after this division would occur. Admittedly, you can take a look at the plan. I'm not going to tell anybody that they can't see with their own eyes. Majority of the lots in the neighborhood would be larger than what would be left if this division does occur. I think, as was indicated in the prior petition, and I understand every petition stands on its own merits, but when you're dealing with things like lot coverage, I was, I'm going to presuppose that this, we'd go to site plan review, it's something that could be looked at as to both lots, including the one with the existing dwelling. If runoff and lot coverage was an issue, take certain measures into account, whether it be, again, you know, capturing runoff, rainwater, putting, you know, downspouts into drywells, things of that nature. But again, I think, you know, again, from a parking standpoint and an over-congestion standpoint, I would suggest to the board respectfully that I don't think that the request is too far of a stretch, again, given where the house is located on the property.
Right. But selling me, this is me, selling me on this is an improvement to parking when you've got this huge lot that you could put parking in, you know, it's a tough sell. So, you know, that's me. I'm looking at it, I'm looking at the space, and it adds parking. So it's not an improvement of the parking situation that couldn't have been accomplished elsewhere. Dan, what do you say? What's the department's?
Well, I mean, the current lot exceeds the minimum frontage requirement by 20 feet, so there's excess frontage. The existing lot, however, doesn't meet the 8,000 square feet. So this is an existing non-conforming lot.
Correct.
So this isn't a scenario where we have a conforming lot making non-conforming lots. It's already non-conforming. However, not for all of the reasons for the relief that's being requested. The lot sizes are small. Again, I don't know what the, if it was even relief that allowed the subdivision of the lots across the street, or if they were just always pre-existing, non-conforming, I don't know that. But as far as the setbacks go, setbacks aren't the real issue. The lot size is the issue for me, and the frontage. The gentleman next door at 323 theoretically could come in and want to cut out a lot on either side of that large house at 323, both sides. He could create lots larger than the proposed Lot 2, but again, that would be a different petition at a different time.
Mr. Chairman, if I just may respond to one of the comments that Mr. Argyar made. These lots, it looks like they were created by a plan back in 1892. They were all like these real super substandard lots. So I think what happened over the years is when people would build, you know, they would buy two or three lots, sometimes people would just buy one or two lots. So, again, when this was done, again, predating zoning, you know, by maybe 60, 70 years or so, the lots kind of looked like what, on that plan, what's being proposed. So I think the lot that's across the street probably was just, one of the lots just built on alone individually without a combination of...
Very well be.
Yes.
Any other questions from the board? Comments from the board?
It says on here that the property uses a two-family.
Is the existing building that's there is a two-family?
It says on the plan, single-family.
Which one's a two-family? This house existing?
The existing one.
Says existing one family on the plan.
Existing one family on the plan, but on...
And on the petition.
On the general property data, it's a two-family.
Is this a two-family? The house that you own, is it a two-family?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it a two or is it a single?
Mr. Mungian's indicating that it's a two-family. I understand that the plan indicates that it's a one-family. You have two tenants in there?
No, it's vacant.
Okay.
It was sold to me, like the...
So I, just for clarification purposes, nice catch, Mr. DePere.
Yeah, good catch.
Mr. Mungian's indicating that the house is currently vacant, that it was sold as an existing two-family structure. If the relief was granted, would you be...
What does the assessor have it listed as?
The unofficial property record has it listed as a two-family home.
Online?
Yeah.
We need to print those out and put them in?
They're in the packet.
They're in the packet?
Yes.
I think the only option would be to withdraw or consider offering converting the two into a single, but I don't know, it's kind of convoluted and dirty without having the plan and application be accurate.
Right. I tend to agree.
I'm not the lawyer, you are, so I don't, you know the legal mess that...
No, no, I tend to agree. I mean, if it's a two-family, an illegal two-family, it should be represented as such on the plan and on the application.
Well, because then we've got parking issues.
Yeah, exactly. It changes everything.
It changes the dynamic of it.
You want to withdraw or table, it's about the same amount of money, so. Deadline's already passed from February meeting, so you're not going to be out until March anyway. It's up to you.
Without putting the board on the spot, is the board comfortable in, I heard from Chairman Pereira, obviously, is the board comfortable in giving an indication as to its thoughts on the possibility of this divided? I understand, you know, that changes the dynamic on the parking and things of that nature, but I just, I heard Chairman Pereira express his thoughts on it, and if other people have similar feelings, then it may impact Mr. Mungian's decision. If the board's comfortable in expressing those at this point.
Good thing I'm not playing poker tonight, Mr. Tom.
But you also have the ability, like I just said, to contemplate the board looking at a two-family structure, non-conforming to the single-family district. Eliminating that nonconformity and making that a single family.
I understand, and that's the topic.
May look more favorably upon...
And that's a conversation that you'll have to have.
Right. A two-family is, it makes it even worse than it is.
Yeah.
Absolutely. It's bad now, so that's the only thing I can say.
But, you know, if I was in your seat, I'd actually be glad that it's a two-family now.
Right. Right.
And come back again and live to fight another day and argue the fact, well, again, that's if Mr. Munger would contemplate converting it back to a single family. If not, then, no.
Should withdraw and refile if you want to-
Because then the overall density would be the same as it is now. And getting rid of a non-conformity.
Okay. All right. So after conferring with my client, and if the board would allow, we'd ask to be able to withdraw without prejudice and refile if we deem it appropriate.
So moved.
Second.
On the motion to withdraw without-
Do we need to come in?
Hmm?
Second, yes.
Yeah, we have motion and second. John Frank?
Need to go to the argument.
Yeah, we can. Hey, whoa, hey, yep, getting there, I forgot. Somebody just reminded me up here. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Although, if it's being withdrawn-
It's being withdrawn prior to any-
That's all right, though, I mean-
Let's hear it. Anybody here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Anybody here wishing to speak in opposition, which I think is you, sir? Hi, just, state your name and address, please.
Lisa Mathias, 277-7.
Okay.
Okay, so I do have a petition that went around throughout the neighborhood. The signature's in opposition.
Okay, could we have that?
Did you say 277?
Correct. This is actually a statement from Maria on the street. She could not be here tonight.
Okay.
So my property abuts this property.
Mm-hmm.
And it's been a lifetime property of my grandparents', and it is a two-family house. And prior to Charles was owning it, it's a two-family house owned by Mrs. Monis. I've known her since I was a baby. Anyway, you guys can see the property layout. So that house is pretty much on the shelf of the street. So as you come down America Street, and I'm not sure if you're familiar, we don't have any sidewalks on the street, and the traffic, people use it as a throughway to get from Stafford Road down to Mariano and Plymouth, and there's a lot of businesses down there. So it deadlocks into the parking lot. You have a lot of traffic. This house in particular is on the shelf of the street. It's right on the sidewalk. The garage is right on the sidewalk. And then, I have a picture, it's on my phone, though. I don't know if that's, you know, if you could see that or not, but it goes straight down, okay? And then that yard goes across. So with that, I know, my dad was in construction, that upon building anything in there, if approved, would have to grade that property all the way up to street level. I, and this is, I mean, it's not about me, but it's about me and the neighborhood, and what's going to happen is my yard is going to flood, for sure, absolutely, for sure. We used to skate down the street, that's all water. There's rivers underneath there. It's just the nature of the property. All of my neighbors, the ones that I could get, get in touch with, have signed the petition. From an ecological standpoint, from elderly people on the street, they, when they walk, they walk their dogs and stuff, it's dangerous. There's just a lot of water flow. Parking is going to be an issue, a continued issue. We have all of the overflow from Stafford Road at the top. Now, all the way to the top of that street are all tenements. So around the corner on Stafford Road, the tenement houses, all, because some of these people that signed the petition who live there, they are forced to park on America Street. It's a dangerous, dangerous spot to park. Um, a two-family and another single-family in a lot that's-
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out. I thought the dead end was coming this way, though.
...graded all the way up.
No, you can do that.
Two-family, which would be sold as a two-family.
That one's a dead end.
A single-family, which would be sold as a single-family. Households typically have between two and three houses. So you're talking nine addition up to six to nine potential walkhard on our street. It, it's hazardous, it's unsafe. We have children in the neighborhood, we have elderly in the neighborhood. It's just-
It is a very busy street.
I just don't think it's a good-
I see what you mean about the grading, because I did take a look at it.
Wicked, it's wicked.
Um, you know, they are providing parking off-street, so I will give them that, but it's a busy street, being that close to Stafford Road, I get it.
Even toward the bottom, I mean, it's like Indianapolis.
Let's put it this way, when I went out there to just take a look around, I couldn't find a place to park, so, at that point. Anything else?
Probably not.
Probably. Okay. We're going to read the petition and-
We'll be able to do it all over again.
Yeah.
This is mine as well, I just think, you know.
Was it from you?
That's from me.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, you do a lot of reading, don't you? Well, these two are identical, so I love it. So we do have a petition. Obviously, there'll be copies of this available for you, Attorney Klarin. With the neighbor, the neighbors-abutters of 301 America Street, Fall River, do hereby disapprove of the, do hereby disapprove of the variance request by Christopher A. Munger to divide the existing parcel into two lots as requested by the board, Zoning Board of Appeals, December 21. A number of these signatories on this are director abutters, so, you know, there is that aspect to consider. And then two letters. One is Maria, and the other one, same letter, ladies and gentlemen of the planning board.
We're not the planning board.
The zoning board of appeals, I'll even change that for you. There's no animosity between the boards. I stand before you today, not just as a resident, but as a voice for the safety and well-being of our community, particularly our elderly and young children. I'm here to express my strong opposition to the proposed construction of a new home in our congested neighborhood, highlighting concerns related to the safety of our valuable population and the potential increase in noise pollution. Our neighborhood is not merely a collection of homes, it is a diverse community, and includes seniors who have spent their lifetime here and young children who are the future of our society. The proposed construction, if approved, would pose significant safety risks for those vulnerable groups. First and foremost, let's consider the safety of our elderly residents. Our neighborhood already grapples with congested street and limited walkability. Approving the construction of a new home would only exacerbate these issues, making it more challenging for our seniors to navigate their surroundings safely. We must prioritize the needs of our elderly residents, ensuring that they can enjoy their community without fear of accidents or hazardous conditions. Likewise, our young children deserve a safe and secure environment in which to grow and play. Increased traffic and potential construction hazards associated with the proposed house could jeopardize the safety of our children, and it is our responsibility to create a neighborhood that fosters the healthy development of our youth, not one that introduces unnecessary risks. Additionally, noise pollution is a serious concern that often goes underestimated. The construction process itself, along with the additional residents, the new home would bring could lead to a significant increase in noise levels. This is not just a matter of inconvenience, it has a direct impact on the quality of life for all residents, affecting our sleep, stress levels, and overall well-being. I implore you to consider the human aspect of this decision. Our community is made up of individuals, each with unique needs and concerns. Approving the construction of a new house without addressing the safety concerns of our elderly and young children, as well as the potential for increased noise pollution, would be a disservice to the very essence of our neighborhood. In conclusion, I urge you to reject the request for building a new house in our congested neighborhood. Let's prioritize the safety and well-being of our elderly and young residents, and ensure that our community remains a haven for all. Together, we can build our future that is safe, inclusive, and conducive to high quality of life for everyone. Thank you for your consideration. Okay. We have a motion on the table to withdraw. So the motion is made and seconded to withdraw without prejudice. On that motion, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Chairman Pereira, yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take a good time.
Thank you. It was withdrawn, so if it does get proposed again, you'll get notified again if something does come up in the future.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you all for coming out. Appreciate it. All right, item number five, WR Construction &amp; Design.
She has a question.
I'm sorry. Yes.
So do these letters go out to the abutters?
Yeah, if they reapply for anything, you'll be renotified.
No, I understand that, but when letters go out, like specifically, do they go out to? Because only three.
Goes to a abutters?
Only three neighbors.
And then a abutters to a abutters. No, I went to many more than that. And across the street.
Because the neighbors across the street that sign that, so we do not get in.
Well, it doesn't mean that they didn't pick it up, but that's who gets mail.
So, yeah, and if there's any, if there's ever any question on that, there are copies of the abutters list, the certified abutters list that goes out. So that has to be done at the assessor's office. It has to be certified that who is, who are the owners of, you know, the legally abutting properties. And as laid out, not just in our regulations, that's out of Massachusetts state law. So if only three, I can't believe only three people got them.
This went out to one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 people. What's the name of the owner?
And it might, it didn't get it. And it might be language barrier, so it's the baus across the street.
Well, you know the name?
His first name, Joseph.
Joseph Bowie?
Yes.
Glad it went out to you.
He got it, I think there's a language barrier.
290 America Street.
Correct.
Probably thought it was a bill from the city. Probably thought it was a bill from the city.
Oh, right. Thanks for your time.
Thank you so much for coming out, folks.
Thank you.
All right, have a great night. Take care. Item number five, WR Construction &amp; Design, 644, 648 Rodman Street. Map, 1-20 lots, 7, 14, and 15. The applicant seeks a variance for the manufacturing and warehousing of wood workshop cabinets in a BL, local business zoning district. The applicant also seeks a special permit pursuant to 86-425 for the expansion of the construction structure, per submitted plans. Before we even start, I just have one quick question. Attorney Saleno, you're representing the owner of the building?
Yes.
Okay. Is, I understand you may have an objection tonight. Is that based on the merits of their proposal, or is that based upon a contractual situation between the owner and the applicant?
The objection is not going to be put forth, so we don't have-
It is not? Okay. All right. Because I was concerned, because your client signed the application, so.
Correct.
All right. So we can go forward. I just, unless I get to run home and get my big black robe, this is not a court of law, so I didn't want to get there. Excellent, thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Jeff Paulman from Northeast Engineering and Consultants, here tonight representing WR Construction &amp; Design. As I'm sure you're all aware, this is not the first time we've been in here with this site. I believe this is the third application that's been submitted to this board fairly recently, within the past year. The last application that was submitted was done by the family that owns Portugalia. That was done back in August. That application is similar in nature to what you see before you tonight, specifically the special permit that we're looking for tonight for the expansion of the existing non-conforming structure at 648 Rodman Street. The proposed addition that we're showing on the plan is the same that was on that previous plan. It's the same square footage, the 28,765 square feet, in the same location, and generally going to be used for the same purpose. For whatever reason, the deal between the property owner and the family that owns Portugalia did not go through, but upon learning of the property and being approached by WR Construction, who had the need for a similar-sized complex, they approached the owner and entered into a purchase and sales agreement to move forward with this property. The, what they're looking to do, obviously, the reason we're here tonight, does require relief for us, as I just stated, would be the special permit of the existing non-conforming I would argue that what they're proposing here would be less detrimental to the neighborhood from what's there now. I think anything that's done on this property, in fact, is going to be less detrimental to, you know, what we have out there now. It would clean up the site, which, you know, drastically needs some improvement, and it would, you know, bring it forward and modernize the look of the buildings and the function. So the other reason we're here tonight is for the variance. And the variance is specific to the manufacturing use that the applicant is proposing. The property's located in the local business zoning district. The property, the buildings itself on the property have been used for many years for warehousing. The previous application also had other components which complied to regulations within the local business district, as does this one. We do have a proposed 5,000-square-foot showroom, which would have some office space above it that we're including in this proposal, but the big reason the variance is required is we are proposing a 8,700-square-foot manufacturing component to the addition that would be added on to 648, thus the variance request that we have before you tonight. The, just to give you a little background of the company, and with me here tonight is Carrie Jordan from WR Construction, and she can speak more to the, to their needs, but from what I understand, it's my understanding, that WR Construction and just the companies that are owned by the same entities currently operate in five different locations, some in the city, some outside the city. When they saw that the previous application didn't move forward, they looked at, you know, what was approved, and that it really would satisfy their needs of what they're looking for. With this application, what they're trying to do is consolidate four of the five spaces that they have now into one location. Again, they are a construction company, they do have a facility on Jefferson Street in Fall River that they currently use to store their construction material. That is not going to change. They are not going to bring the construction material to this particular location. What they're looking to do, as you can see on the plan, is they're looking to create a showroom, add quite a bit of a warehouse space, and also add a small 8,000-square-foot, 8,700-square-foot manufacturing component. So with that, with the overview of the project, I'm going to let Mr. Jordan speak of, to give you a little background on what WR Construction does.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Jordan. I do work for WR Construction and Quality Design Cabinets. So, well, I have several, if you'd like, for the board to review. One is the actual cabinet that we manufacture. In addition to that is one of a site that we have that is a separate location, and then this is what the proposed, at this kind of rough drawing that we have, that at the end of construction, once we go through site review, and all the required permits and everything's in place, what we're hoping that this will view, look like. So.
We'll take those.
Okay. WR Construction and is, and Quality Design Cabinets, sorry, is owned by a gentleman, Wilton Riberio. Marto Riberio is here, his wife, they're longtime standing residents within the city of Fall River. So they own their home, their primary home, their children go to school here. In addition to that, they own another building where their WR Construction trucks and things that's after construction and things have been. Quality Design Cabinets has two manufacturing companies elsewhere in Rhode Island. We also have a showroom, and we have our office space. What we're looking to do is consolidate our manufacturing, our showroom, as well as- What we're looking to do is consolidate our manufacturing, our showroom, as well as our office space. Right now, I have people going from, you know, pick up over here, manufacture here, and then a showroom, and come see this over here, and I'd like to do that in one spot. When Wilton and Marta found out, hey, my hometown has a space. Let's go take a look at that and make, see if we can make that work. And that's what you have here. And the, the green one that you kind of can see here, this is one of our sites. Um, and this is the manufacturing machines. They're all, we have brought them in. There's CMC machines. We run them through that. So we have about, I think it's a max of ten employees that would be on site. So we're talking about traffic and we'll get to that. Our cabinets. This is the other one. This is the manufacturing of the cabinets. We've just gone through certifications. So, um, our CMCA, I have to practice that still. Uh, but we've just been certified to be able to have those, uh, through there. So that's a new and wild, wonderful thing that's just been done. And then finally, you have what the building proposes to look like, which I think you've seen the current site. It's an improvement.
I cringe every time I drive by it, so.
Yeah.
Wondering if something's going to stick.
Yeah. Well, we're, we're hoping this is going to stick.
So you'd be consolidating some of your operation that's in Rhode Island now here?
Yep.
Good, that's when. Interesting.
You mentioned about another, uh, location that will be storing of materials?
So that's what it, Jeff shows in this, we don't have enough offs, I'm sorry. Maybe I misunderstood your question.
Jeff, mention something about another location.
The, the construction, the WR Construction vehicles that are used for construction, those are stored off-site.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
No outside storage of equipment, materials, uh.
No.
Backhoes, bulldozers, anything like that outside.
Oh, no, no, no.
This is going to be more for the manufacturing end of it.
Exactly. It's for the, the, the primary use. So I work on both sides of the thing. So when I say office space, it's me. But the office space is obviously used for others as well. Marta's there, Wilton's there. Our core headquarters would be there.
Corporate headquarters and then other stuff.
But you have quality that's the primary. So quality would be the primary, which is why we're seeking for the manufacturing portion of it as well. And we have to be able to store our product once we've manufactured it and then display. We'd love, you know, the showroom to be able to display the cabinets, bring in, be able to show.
Are, are you mostly selling to contractors or do you also sell directly to homeowners?
Commercial residential.
Businesses, et cetera.
Both contractors. Other business.
Good. Any other questions, Phil?
Hours of operation.
For the, oh, hours of operation. Oh, you know what? Sorry. Uh, currently they're in, uh, well, let me say this. It would be within, if there's a manufacturing bylaw that we have within the city of Fall River, so we fall within that. Uh, we would accommodate that. But primarily right now, they're at seven to three thirty, I believe it is.
Just one shift?
Yes. There's no overnight.
One shift, five days a week or, or?
Five days a week.
Showroom open on the weekend?
I'm sorry.
Is the showroom open on the weekend?
Showroom is open by appointment on weekends currently.
I agree with that. We'd strip you out of that.
Do you like the ability to operate on a Saturday as well?
Yes.
Yeah, I think they would like the ability to operate on a Saturday if need be.
Yeah.
Yes.
For, for the showroom?
Yes.
Or, or manufacturing as well?
Well, so we, we'd be able to, manufacturing, possibly, if we could keep it open for that, yes, absolutely. Um, and then when we talk about, i- if you're limiting, we'd be able to, if we have installs, because we do have installs, so we also install the cabinets. We have the potential of that, so being able to go pick up the cabinets, put them in our truck, and off the guys go. And that's how that kind of works.
So ask for it now.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Saturday, please.
Time. Same time, Saturday?
Yes, please.
Seven?
Yes.
Seven to five, Monday to Friday.
Seven to five.
Seven to five, yeah.
I thought you said.
I think you said three thirty, I think.
I thought he was, I'm sorry. I thought you were asking about the employees, the working.
No, no.
I apologize.
Yeah. And, and we ask that because there's so much residential there now that, you know, we're.
Deliveries, you know, we have a concern with, uh, tractor trailer deliveries coming in and out. Certain times, nothing before. We usually say seven AM.
Sure.
I don't know, you know, if that's, uh, an issue or we just need to make sure.
Yeah, my understanding was is that there was some concern with the previous, with Lawrence Street, in regards to tractor trailers coming in and out. Generally, we only receive, uh, our material once a month because we order in such quantity. Like, we order it so that we only need to do that. So large tractor trailer trucks are not a primary issue, which might have been an issue prior to with the supermarkets, especially these.
And it would seem that your, your loading doors are on the opposite side anyway. They're not on the, the Lawrence Street side. They're on the opposite side, so that would be your.
Yeah, all the access would be off of Rodman Street.
But there's really no difference in this plan from, from the last plan, right?
It, it, not really. Um, in, in as much as I liked the idea of the last plan and, and the, um, the plans that they had for it, this particular use would be, I, I think, less detrimental to the neighborhood. They wouldn't be having as many deliveries.
Physically, it's almost identical.
The addition is exactly the same. Uh, the only minor change is to the parking area on the north side. That's reduced. It was extended further to the north on the previous plan. And we do have more parking. Uh, I want to say there was thirty-some parking spots on the previous plan where this one has forty, uh, forty-one, but they're more consolidated in a, in a smaller area.
Yeah, they were kind of scattered, weren't they? Yeah. How, how many employees at, at the facility in total between the showroom, the warehousing?
Both, both entities, ten.
Oh, okay. All right, so you have plenty of park.
So in those hours, it was Monday through Saturday, seven to five?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Are you a for or against?
My name is Sonia Campbell, and, uh, I think you, they will reach the neighborhood. They're gonna build, they're gonna improve the building, and I see a lot of homeless people around. So that will solve the problem, because there's a lot of problems in that area.
Could we have your address, please?
I have a household on five fifty-seven Lonsdale Street.
Thank you.
Fifty-seven Lonsdale.
Fifty-seven.
Why is they, why is they?
Why is they?
Why is they? Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor? Yes.
I'm Marta Rivera, I'm the wife of the owner. Live at eleven twenty-seven South Main Street. We're a long residence here at the city of Fall River. I think will be a big improvement for the area. And also, we have a lot of employees that are residents of Fall River too. So our, I think it will benefit both the enterprise and the city and the citizens.
Great. Thank you very much.
And I would just like to make a correction. On Saturdays, the operating hours would only be probably the showroom and the shop. It's usually between eight and twelve PM max.
Yeah, but.
Do yourself a favor.
You might do much better than you were doing before, so you'd need more hours.
You don't have to work.
Chairman, I just have a couple of questions.
Yes, please.
When we talk about manufacturing.
Sure.
Do you actually finish the cabinets? Is there a finishing process that you do here?
So there's the machine.
As far as applying, but are, but are there ventilation systems?
Yes.
Odors, any?
There, so we, there is.
That's a concern in a residential district.
Absolutely.
So this isn't just a woodworking shop. This is also a material finishing shop.
If you see one, two, three in the screen here, um, you can see the machines that we have.
Yeah, I don't know which ones read.
Right, right. So that's what they, there's a ventilation systems that come in and they have to be, you can see them.
The owner's wife has a comment on it.
Go ahead.
Can I speak, please?
The ventilation.
The majority of our orders, uh, because we are a, a dealer, uh, they already come finished, depending on what the client wants for the cabinet. And, uh, we also do flush cabinets. They already come, there's no finish. The panel already has the color, uh, that the client picks. I would say probably only ten percent of our ordering, uh, that we do finish, that we have to paint.
Okay.
All right. Other than that, is there any specific location for office space?
Yeah, the same building as the showroom.
The same room as the.
Yes, I think the.
The same room as the showroom, yeah.
So in the, so in the other larger building, there will be no office space?
The, the larger building, the six forty-eight, I believe, would be entirely warehouse and manufacturing. With, it, so, maybe some of the warehouse space in the smaller building would be converted to office space, depending on the, um, but.
Well, just I want to make sure that when we get to site plan review, that parking requirements are based upon what you're actually building.
Yes.
Sure.
And then I see that there's been no relief requested with regards to parking or anything about setbacks, landscaping, all those types of things. You know, you're going to need to comply with all the sections of parking in the zoning bylaw. As far as building setbacks, like parking setbacks to abutting properties, all those kinds of things. So there's been no relief for quite a bit of those items, so we won't know that until we get there. And then lastly, is there any signage proposed?
So.
Like can pylon signs or?
Just.
And on the picture.
Again, as the, as the picture, as we have with the picture, I.
That, pretty much.
So whatever is allowed by law in a BL zoning district.
Sure.
That's what you need to comply with.
Yes.
And that, because I don't care if it's on that plan.
Sure.
So I don't, I don't know off the top of my head what BL allows, but it may be very limited. So you might have to go through this process again to get a sign.
If, if that's what we would have to do, then that's what we would have to do in, in regards to signage.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, one question, Dan. In terms of the parking, what, what is the required setback from a parking?
It, it varies. If you're adjacent to a, like, a residential purpose or something is owned residentially, then it's supposed to be ten feet, five feet, if you do some type of a solid wall.
Yeah, there's no residential, I mean, the, the parking.
Well, it's on BL, so it's residential purposes. But it doesn't say what it's used for. So, I don't know.
It, it, it abuts the river trail, obviously. So the, the parking net is tied to the property.
But there's other stuff about, you know, landscaping requirements.
Sure.
All the percentages based on all that kind of stuff, so I want to make sure that we're going to be able to comply with those things.
Okay.
Because we often end up with situations where we get the site plan review and there is additional relief that's needed. And then applicants become unhappy with the fact that they need to go through this process again, so.
Was the parking right up to the, the recreation, the trail area in the last permutation?
I don't remember.
There was, there was a setback. There wa, there was a buffer there. We only had the parking on the one side adjacent to the building.
Right.
Uh, but we did have it extended further to the north. So, I mean, we could go back with similar, uh, type layout if need be. You know, if we have to, uh, might be able to cut those parking spots down on that side to, uh, parallel parking rather than perpendicular. You know, there's probably other ways to address it. And once we determine the exact breakdown of what the building's going to be and what the parking requirements are, uh, we can certainly lay the, lay that out.
Should that just be left to site plan review at this point?
No. No, it doesn't mean zoning is going to come back here.
Right.
It's not requesting this petition. You can't, you can't, you can't grant it, so. Again, we often have this discussion about enumerating the types of relief needed and hopefully the applicant requests the appropriate. So you can act on the, on the requests that have been presented before you and not see an issue with any.
Right.
But again, I want to make it clear that if there are items that do not comply, then they'll have to either revise it or come back to you for additional relief. And as I'm not the zoning enforcement officer, I can't tell you that until it gets submitted. There are other people in this building that do that.
Yeah.
I'd have to go dig into the parking setback, to be honest with you.
Has the petition or has any additional changes proposed that we grant the, uh, variance as requested?
No, second.
And you might have to come back.
Do you want to do hours of operation as a?
Oh, hey, yeah, with the hours of operation.
Yes, bifurcated. No, it's not. So hours of operation.
Seven to five Monday through Saturday.
Yep.
And relief is specific to the requesting relief? Not, not just what's shown on the plan?
Yep. Request a relief, yes, yep. Anything further? Yes.
Yes, uh, hours of operation is Monday through Friday, seven to five, Saturday, eight to two.
We're going to leave it to seven to five.
We're going to give you seven to five.
You don't have to stay open until seven to five, but we're going to leave.
Just a window, just a window of where you could be.
You don't have to stay open, don't worry.
So that way, if on a Saturday, suddenly if at two thirty on a Saturday, somebody comes in and picks something up, the neighbor can't say, they're not supposed to be working right now. Okay, just in case, you know, or if you go past noon time. Trust me, all right? Okay. Any, uh, anything further on the motion? Then on the motion, Ricky Sahadi.
Yes.
We did get a second. Uh, Dan De Pair?
Yes.
Uh, Jim Cawkins? I'm getting confused. John Frank?
Yes.
Chairman Perrier, yes.
Who's second to that? Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Now, because of us, you're going to have to work until five every Saturday.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Overtime, overtime.
You better come.
Item number six, Divine Development LLC, five fifty-eight and five fifty, I'm sorry, five fifty-four and five fifty-eight Third Street. Map, I eleven lot thirteen. The applicant seeks a special permit to divide the property into two lots, leaving the existing three-family dwelling located at the front of the property, five fifty-four Third Street, on lot one, uh, a three thousand, one hundred and twenty square foot parcel of land, uh, with fifty-one foot, feet of frontage on Third Street, and the existing three-family dwelling located at the rear of the property, five fifty-eight Third Street, on lot two, a three thousand, seven hundred and forty-four square foot parcel with fifteen feet of frontage on Third Street. The property is located in an A-two apartment zoning district. Take it away.
Good evening. For the record, Jeff Tolman from Northeast Engineers and Consultants, here representing Divine Development LLC, the petitioner for the, uh, special permit request that's before you tonight. Uh, the property is stated is at five fifty-four, five fifty-eight Third Street, uh, located on the west side of Third Street, just north of Branch Street. Both the dwellings, five fifty-four and five fifty-eight, are three-family dwellings. The property itself is located in the apartment A-two zoning district. And based on, um, assessor, uh, records and, uh, other city records, the houses were built around nineteen hundred. As a result of these factors, um, what we've requested is a special permit under section eighty-six, four twenty-three B, um, to divide the property so that each of the dwellings would be on a separate lot. As you can see, the, the lot lines have been drawn in such a manner to maintain a minimum of four and a half foot setback to leave maneuvering space to get around the dwellings as required. It's not the easiest layout, but I think it is the best fit. It, the properties are roughly divided area-wise into equal lots. Lot one, uh, does have the majority of the frontage at fifty-one feet, as in lot two, uh, only has the fifteen feet. But lot two does have the, uh, the driveway and will have, uh, use of the driveway. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
So currently, that driveway is the only off-street parking for both of these?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, it's only for the lot two, right?
It will be, but currently, before dividing the lot,
was that only for lot? Was that only for the rear house or was it catch-a-scatch can for either house?
I'm not sure what the, the current arrangement is between the, the property owner and the tenants. I'm not sure who has the right, uh, to use that, but moving forward with this division, that driveway would be used for lot two.
Good. Dan, anything?
Uh, no. I mean, I think the subdivision line is good. It provides a minimum of four feet around the structure of five fifty-four. The only concern I would have is that, when you just mentioned the existing asphalt driveway, would potentially be now nineteen feet plus, so you could fit cars front to back. This, this new layout, you will not be allowed to do that. You'll only be able to allow a single line, front to back.
Yep.
So overall, there may be a reduction in, in parking as currently on the site, but I don't think it's anything substantial enough to, to question the viability of the subdivision.
Okay. Questions?
Separate utilities, of course.
Yes.
No interior fencing.
And no interior fencing, yeah. That'd be a ball. Any questions? Real confused, Dan. Talk to me.
Oh, you got a letter from the building inspector. And that's what it says. It says that installation of clearly marked boundary markers.
Requires the utilities to be separated, the installation of clearly marked boundary markers. To avoid the Sunday afternoon summertime argument in the parking lot.
The building inspector has, has mentioned in the past that he would like to see that happen on that interior lot line.
Okay.
Permanent boundaries, we said, and all, the lot corners.
Alright. Thank you, Glenn. Any other questions? Seeing no one from the general public, I will make the broad assumption that no one wants to speak either for or against. In which case, it's up to us. Dan makes a motion to grant through the stipulations of separation of utilities and no interior fence and clearly marked property boundaries. I knew you'd do that. Second from Jim Cawkins on the...
No, John did.
I'm sorry, John did, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that. Alright, therefore, on the motion, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Chairman Perrier, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Moving on.
Moving on. I'm waiting for this one.
This is gonna make half your problems go away.
I know.
Oh, sure.
Item number seven, proposed zoning map amendment. Discuss and make a request recommendation for the City of Fall River City Council, uh, with regard to the extension of the waterfront and transit-oriented development district, better known as the WATOD, as follows. Uh, easterly...
I've never heard it called that.
You, you never had me at the end of a thirty-six hour day. Uh, easterly from the easterly side of Deval Street to the westerly side of North Main Street, northerly from the north side of Walnut Street to a point approximately six hundred and forty feet north of the northerly side of Whalen Street.
So let me give you a little bit of history of what we're doing. You guys should all have this little handout, I think somewhere, either in your packet, or hopefully it's scanned in, but I'll, I'll read through it.
It's scanned in.
So this was a presentation that we had given to the planning board two months ago. There you go, Chris, how, you think I can read that, as big as it is?
Well, it, it's also on my iPads.
Uh, so we presented this to the planning board two months ago.
Yep.
Um, and they, they voted to recommend, well, we're asking you to recommend again today. So, so what we're doing is, what are we discussing? We're discussing the expansion slash extension of the existing WTOD, which currently runs along the edge of the Taunton River, easterly to Deval Street North. What is the WTOD? The WTOD was originally implemented to provide opportunity along our waterfront corridor for increased multifamily unit density, four units minimum, multi-use residential, retail, commercial, and recreational facilities, reduced parking requirements, reduced parcel size, increased building height, and increased lot coverage. So what are we proposing? As the chairman stated, this proposal will expand slash extend the WTOD zoning district in the following fashion. So currently, running along Deval Street North, uh, which would bring you by the gas station, by, uh, the new Riverview apartment building, President Avenue Plaza, continuing all the way up that side of Deval Street. That's where it currently ends in the easterly direction. We would be taking that line and dragging it easterly to the westerly side of North Main Street.
Mm-hmm.
And then in the north-south direction, from Walnut Street, and I think you, I don't know which map to tell you is the, is the better one to look at. But, so you'll see, on the left is the area currently how it is zoned, with the yellow WTOD district to the left. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see where that area is now being colored yellow. So that would be the expanded area. WTOD now currently runs well south of Bay Street area and beyond, way, way further down, to much further north than, than even this as well. So what this does is creates a more uniform, parallel distance to the water for this similar type of use. So, why now? Uh, the Waterfront Urban Renewal Plan of two thousand and nineteen recommended modifications similar to those being proposed now. The area that falls within the developable parcels through Route seventy-nine project currently fall within the WTOD district. So, the entire construction project that you guys have all lived through for the last year and a half, and will for the next three, that interior land that everybody's discussed, those nineteen acres, are currently owned, are zone WTOD.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's the same way that we are proposing to extend that area further east. With South Coast Rail MBTA Community Station coming online, the state has mandated that we submit and allow for a minimum required multifamily housing density within a specific radiance of the facility. We've been able to, um, achieve interim compliance based on the existing WTOD. And they've actually, the state has actually heralded the work that the city had done back to when this was initially instituted for creating the type of zoning district that they want other municipalities to adopt as well. Uh, and I know we've seen a couple of things come through here. But what we've seen is parcels that are adjacent to the WTOD.
Right.
Wanting to utilize the WTOD zoning district. When we look at Mr. Carrum's building at, uh, Riverview, the building south of that, next to the gas station, uh, just south of Turner Street, all of those were developed basically to the standards that WTOD allows for. But in the zoning districts that they're currently in, requires special permits, variances, a number of other types of relief. So this will allow them the ability to know what's coming in next door, or what could be across the street, allowing developers to think a little bit more grand. Currently, in these zoning districts that we're looking at, getting back to the, the MBTA community station stuff, although we have multifamily dwellings through this entire corridor,
Mm-hmm.
we don't get credit for it in their calculations, because the land is in zone for that. So we could have a six-family house on five thousand square feet, but the underlying zone doesn't allow for six-family houses on five thousand square feet. We don't get credit for those multifamily houses. So what this will do, this will bring a number of those parcels into compliance, and then we can get credit for those as well. So the mapment, the map amendment will allow for the development and redevelopment of the following. It'll allow an increase in the unit density of existing structures to create new housing opportunities. It will allow for the construction of new structures that align with the current opportunities afforded by the WTOD designation. The WTOD specifically provides protection to those industrial uses within mill buildings in existence prior to two thousand and eleven. So you'll see in this district, there are a few areas that are zoned commercial mill district now.
Yep.
The WTOD, even when they created it way back when, because it didn't encompass some of the mill buildings along the waterfront, it gives protection to the existing uses, so that they will not get shut out if those uses want to continue. Then again, the Massachusetts General Law provides grandfathering protection for all existence uses not currently permitted within the WTOD. So whatever anybody's got in it now is not being taken away. It's just adding additional opportunities, uh, for the city and for developers to use. And as I previously stated, it creates a uniform depth of this specific zone running parallel to the Taunton River. Something we were, we were speaking about when we were dealing with the interior parcels, which is now currently being master planned and speaking to master developers. Some of the concern is, okay, we're working within our bookshelf ends of Deval Street North and Deval Street South, but what's gonna happen directly across the street of Deval Street?
Yep.
Is it going to stay what it is? Is there potential for growth? Are there other opportunities to be like-minded to what we're going to build to allow this to become even grander than what it is? This will allow for that to happen. So the way that this process goes, and Chris knows it better than I do, we are required, we could just go to the city council now with just the planning board recommendation. We wanted to give everyone an opportunity to voice concern, recommend, uh, any merit. But this does come back to you for a public hearing, correct?
It goes back to, uh, a joint meeting of the planning board.
Joint meeting of everybody, yeah.
Not zoning board.
Okay.
Just planning board and the city council.
Okay.
See how it goes?
So, all this is, is a recommendation. This is not a rezoning. It's just asking the city council to now look at it and go through the process, listen to all of the upholders. Everyone gets notified, there are public hearings, and everyone has the ability to come and comment on it before it goes forward.
Yep.
But this, I, I know we've always looked at, you know, even when I was in that chair for twenty-eight years, Chairman Assad and Chairman Diocentus before that would often say, "You guys shouldn't be here requesting some of this relief." The proper way to do these things is to rezone and to change zoning requirements. So, we're trying to do that in the correct vein, because similar to the way you saw the petition that came in for one oh one President Avenue, the Almax Plaza, when they originally approached us, I had explained to them that, gentlemen, we are in the process of extending, or trying to extend this WTOD zoning district, that in six months, you may not need to go to the zoning board of appeals and ask for variances. They couldn't wait. That was their decision to make. And it didn't end up coming, you know, coming through anyway. But, those are the types of relief that you guys will not be burdened with. It will be through site plan review and whatever requirements we do now put in this corridor and in the WTOD zoning district. There will be other discussions that will come here and discuss as well about potentially changing some of the requirements that are in the existing WTOD.
Okay.
Having to do with parking, landscaping, to make sure that what gets built. So, you don't wanna, you don't wanna rub a lamp, right, and let something out of a lamp and then have no control over it? So we wanna make sure that we are providing a framework in a cage to allow these things to happen the way that we wanna let them happen. So this is, this is the first step of, of going through that process. And we felt that North Main Street, the bottom of the hill, would have been the mo, best location. When we go up North Main Street, there are a number of parcels that could theoretically fit in here. And that was it. It was the cleanest, easiest line that encompassed the area we felt would, uh, would meet or need this kind of development. Once we get to the north side, sorry, the east side of North Main Street, we start having, uh, topographical issues, uh, a number of different things that would, you know, almost impede the type of development that, that we're thinking about.
You're picking up a school, a park, a lot of other things too, so...
It didn't make much sense to continue further east than, than this line.
Maximum, maximum height in the WTOD is...
What's that? Maximum height now is six, six units, uh, six stories.
That's...
Eighty feet.
One of my questions, can you expand on some of these?
Yeah, what's...
Um, like, the reduced parking requirements?
Yep.
One instead of two, is that what you're talking about?
No, so right now, so, all this does is it pushes you directly back to what is already allowed in WTOD. And let me get, let me tell you what those are. Lot's overlay. Eighty-six, one seventy-five. One page off. Okay. So currently, in the WTOD zoning district, and I'll explain these to you one by one. Right now, the maximum building height shall not exceed six stories or eighty feet, whichever is greater. This restriction does not apply to chimneys, ventilators, tanks, bulkets. The maximum building height may be increased to twelve stories or one hundred and fifty feet upon granting of a special permit by this board. So that would still be the case on anything that would want to go greater than the six stories or eighty feet. Parking. Dwelling units. One and a half spaces per unit for buildings less than fifty units. One point two-five spaces per unit in buildings that are fifty units or more. So, already in exceedance of what normally the type of relief is that we grant. Restaurants and retail establishments, no dedicated parking is required. Hotel and lodging, one space per each hotel room. Office space, one space per each two hundred square feet of gross floor area after ten thousand square feet. Industrial uses, one space per five hundred square feet. Water-dependent uses, point six spaces per boat slip or mooring. Mixed-use developments that share parking spaces containing more than two hundred spaces may reduce the required number by thirty percent. So those are the only things beyond your normal parking or building requirements that the WTOD allows for. Now, let's get down to the minimum lot size requirements in a WTOD. WTOD zoning district. Minimum lot size, twenty-five hundred square feet, fifty feet of frontage. Building setbacks are ten, ten, and ten. Building height, eighty feet. Maximum lot coverage, eighty percent. So, again, I didn't create this, but a lot that's twenty-five hundred square feet with fifty feet of frontage and ten-foot building setbacks, you can't fit something on.
No.
So I don't understand where the twenty-five hundred square foot comes in, because it's basically negligible. Nobody's creating one lot here that allows for one house to be built. In fact...
An eighty-foot tall building with a forty-by-forty footprint, that'd be cool.
Well, and, and so then here's, here's what's funny. So when we look at WTOD, for residential, you cannot build a building less than four units.
Yep.
Single-family, two-family, three-family, not allowed.
Right.
So I don't get the twenty-five hundred square foot thing. So these are, these are the types of things. But what that does for us is it allows us to bring existing parcels into compliance for our MBTA zoning requirements. So if we have, you know, a five thousand square foot lot that's got three units on it, well, it complies to the area requirement now, so it meets the zoning requirements of fifty feet of frontage and twenty-five hundred square feet. So now we can grab those units and get credit for them. So, and just so you, you understand, you can look this all up, chapter three A, um, M, uh, Mass. General Law about MBTA. If we do not meet the parking requirements designated by the government, then we are not allowed to apply for or receive certain funding mechanisms and grants, um, that are given to us by the state. And that's all triggered by us voting to become an MBTA community, which is, which the city already voted to do.
Yeah.
Two years ago, I think it was, roughly?
Yeah, December.
Would've been three, yeah.
The last...
So again, do we, do, do we think we already meet the requirement? I do. But you don't know that until they've entered all of the information into their matrix. I mean, this is, it's a, I don't know if the process is gonna go as smoothly or as strictly as they initially intended, because there are a number of different communities and lawsuits, and I mean, there are people fighting this everywhere. So basically, anywhere where there's rail or a budding municipality to rail, they all need to create multifamily housing zoning, which a lot of them don't have.
They don't have it, yeah.
So it's great that the burden is now being shared amongst the rest of the Commonwealth, the multifamily homes. Um, but it's those more affluent communities that are fighting this. So we don't know where it's ultimately gonna end. Right now, the rules are still the rules. So all we can do is do what we're supposed to be doing.
Well, I mean...
And that may change.
Part of the reason, part of the reason we're, we're going through Middleborough is the fact there are certain communities north of us that don't want us to go to the Stoughton Line, so... And, uh, and this is exactly why.
So now we're taking a hard right turn.
The governor put a lot of emphasis on this when he was, they, this day, yesterday.
Yeah, yeah.
Yesterday.
Yeah.
Well, and a lot, a lot of that is because of the pushback and opposition she's been receiving from everywhere else, you know?
Yeah, she, they have to go after that, is what she...
Even the master developer, the master planners that the redevelopment authority has just hired, um, to do this plan, when they look at that WTOD zoning district, normally they have to commit and they have to tell communities, "No, no, you have to change this, you have to do this." They're coming into a situation where they've, that groundwork's already been laid.
Interesting.
I can't take credit for it, 'cause if I could, I would, but I did not, I was not involved in this when, when they initiated it the first time.
I'm just curious, why don't we go further west?
Oh, there you go, yeah.
Or, 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 why, why doesn't the border go up to the waterfront?
Which, oh, no, it does go up.
Oh.
No, it, it is to the waterfront.
Right now, right now, it starts at the Taunton River.
It's expanding.
Oh, it looks like that there's a line, line west of the red line.
Yeah, anything yellow, actually, if you look at...
Oh, 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 okay.
Anything yellow is current.
So it's not the line, oh, oh, alright.
Yeah, actually, look behind you, you might see it better.
I can see that one now.
So, so right now, that red line to the left, that's where it ends now.
Oh, alright.
Or that's where, yeah, or that's where the blue change will be.
What I, what I will point out to everybody on the board is, look at the variety of zoning districts that we're dealing with currently.
Yeah.
And it's prime space that, you know, people are gonna wanna develop.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What I don't want to have happen is end up, especially with the smaller sideline setbacks, is a sea of eighty and hundred-and-fifty-foot buildings.
Well...
You know, bordering the waterfront.
Right, so, so what would have to happen there is, I mean, someone would have to buy multiples on, they'd have to buy blocks
Yeah.
in order to see something substantial, because there is still the parking requirement that they need to comply.
Yep.
So not everybody is going to be building parking garages underneath their buildings. So, the way that we envisioned seeing things moving forward, we were expecting a lot coverage ratio of about thirty to fifty percent building footprint, and then parking, landscaping, you know, with the rest of it, but that's all being dealt with now. But there will be potential zoning changes
Yep.
to the actual double WTOD after we get recommendations from the master planner, about what types of things we need, because they're actually meeting with master developers to see what, what would entice you to come here. You know, if one developer comes in and buys all nineteen acres, they're going to want to, you know, they're going to want to make sure that their investment is protected.
Yep.
And allowing others to do other work adjacent to them in a similar fashion or smaller fashion, you know, does give them some protection as well. I, I had told the gentleman at one oh one President Avenue, so I have to give you guys credit for being the first ones in, although this is a difficult, you know, way that you're doing it. You're, you're, you're tackling this thing, so, but that, we're getting these developers from outside of the area that see this need
Yeah.
or the ability now to do this stuff in this corridor. And, I mean, it's, it's like nothing you've seen before, I mean, this is...
Are there ITCs for those developers working in investment tax credits for them?
Right now, we're not doing anything.
No, no, it wouldn't be us, that'd be federal or, or state level ITCs.
She, again, in her, her address yesterday, she proposed a lot more tax credits for housing.
Yeah. So this is just an initial step.
And the, the public comment period will happen once this gets into the city council's...
I mean, it's on our agenda, as it gets advertised, but nobody looks at that.
Yeah.
But, actual abutter notifications go out before those public hearings, so, I'm sure it'll be like, like some of the MBTA meetings where, I'm sure it'll be held at a high school or...
I was going to say, we'll be at the fieldhouse of Durfee.
Something, yeah, yeah.
Do you need a motion, uh, to...
Yeah.
So moved.
And that's all they're looking for, is a motion to support?
Yeah, so, a letter to write, a letter to the council recommending that they take up the zoning map amendment, something to that effect.
I'll second.
Okay, on the motion then, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Chairman Perri, yes. No, excuse me.
Yes.
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 Okay.
Making a motion to waive the reading of the minute?
Minutes?
Oh, citizens' input, ask for citizens' input first.
What's that, oh?
Just to say that you asked for it.
Is there anyone on citizens' input? Did you get the check-in list? All right, minutes. Approval of minutes, December twenty-one, we have a motion to waive the reading and approve the minutes, we have a second?
Sorry.
And on the motion, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Chairman Perri, yes?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Yes.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, you can stay here.